Council Public Hearing to Order Wednesday. It is five thirty P M. The topic is Appeal of Planning Commission Decision on Positional Use. C U P. Point four, point three, sensitive land for it, S L. Zero point two three floodplain. And S L five. Three wetlands and sign permit S. One four, four two three, for new police station. Located on the southeast corner of Old Fort New Road and Pasture Road. Now I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our city planner, Derek Branson.
Mayor Shoal. It's now five thirty one P M. Public hearing is now open. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is an appeal of condition use permit. Four dot twenty three, sensitive lands permit S L four dot twenty three floodplanes and sensitive lands permit S L five twenty three wetlands and sign permit S fourteen twenty three. Certain properties identified on the county's sensor map is lot fifteen hundred on that four north one west nine A B. Yeah, and and the pellet is the city of Saint Helens. The owner is the same because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain. Procedural formalities, we must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. So here we go. Does any member of the council with the declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? Or bias in this matter?
I'd like to turn it over to Bill Monahan. I know that, um, Bill, I know you want to time in a little bit on this.
Well, certainly, Mayor. Thank you. I've asked Jacob to modify the script because when I looked at it, it looked like it might. Require a little bit more in the way of disclosures and clarity. So when we're talking about. Potential or actual conflicts of interest. A potential conflict of interest is when someone may have. A financial conflict of interest, either financial benefit or financial detriment, but it's a may. When it's an actual conflict of interest, it's a certainty. It's clear that there will be a financial benefit or detriment. For the individual decision maker, should they participate in this decision? So when there is a. A potential conflict of interest. It's absolutely necessary that the individual make a declaration of that. A potential conflict of interest and state what it is. And then they have the opportunity to make a decision whether or not to participate in the proceedings. They're not required with a potential conflict of interest. To step out of the process. However, if someone has an actual conflict of interest. The individual is required also to make a declaration, place it on the record, and that individual is not allowed to participate in the proceedings.
So that would. More so that would have been towards our next public hearing. Um, than this one. But but yes, I was gonna ask you about, uh, Counselor Hubbard, who was on the planning commission.
So, uh, Counselor Hubbard was on the planning commission. That doesn't rise to there being a conflict of interest. Because unless he made a declaration at that time, and I'm not aware that he did. When we're talking about conflicts of interest, it's purely about financial. There has to be a financial element to it. But, uh, Counselor Hubbard's participation at the planning commission level. Would by his action at that level could constitute a bias. If he is not able to, uh. Participate in this proceeding tonight with an open mind, ready to consider all of the evidence. That has been put and put forth to counsel at this hearing. If he's not able to make a decision based on the record and what he hears tonight. If he's prejudged and can't change his mind, then he would not be able to participate because of a bias.
Go ahead, Jacob.
That's a D novo. It is. I knew, I knew.
Okay, well, I see all those tacitly.
Jacob, I'd like to recuse myself on this. But a lot of people have been reaching out to me and tried not to engage in the discussion, but people wanting to talk about this matter. And I just, um. I don't feel comfortable. I'd like to think that I've not been. Influenced by it, but I'd rather set this one out. I put the standard for bias on the record. Thank you. Sorry, we get an ID for the record.
I am, yes, I'm Peter Watts. Um, I am an attorney. And I'm going to participate in this decision on behalf of the city. I I think that the last time I was in front of you was in twenty seventeen, so the. Allow, and I've been running this city council. Um, the the relevant case on bias in Oregon is called Columbia Riverkeeper Northwest. The class of county to twenty fourteen page. Um, and the standard is. It was written by the Oregon Court of Appeals is. Um, first. The scope of the matter and questions at issue is narrowly limited to the specific decision that's before the tribunal. Second, that the nature of elected and local officials making decisions in quadri, quasi judicial proceedings. The bias must must be actual, not apparent. And third, the substantive standard for actual bias is the decision maker is so prejudge. The particular matter at the incapable of determining its merits on the basis of the evidence and arguments presented. So. There is no single case, um, in Oregon. That I'm aware of where someone has had actual bias. The the standard is that high. Basically, it comes down to if you're willing to consider evidence. And willing to change your mind about a matter, maybe you learn something new. Um, and the Court of Appeals says it it's normal for local officials to hear things and have opinions on matters. If you absolutely made up your mind and there's nothing that can be said or evidence that can be considered today that would change your mind. Then that is bias and you should recuse yourself. If you're willing to consider new evidence, you're willing to consider. Testimony from your planner, testimony from the McKenzie team, testimony from me, testimony from your chief police department. And you are willing to change your mind based on that evidence and those facts. Then you don't have bias. Um, there is a testimony that or a letter that I reviewed prior to the proceeding where. Um, that person alleged bias. So I, this is why I came prepared with the case. Um, and I would just add, um, A, that if if any of you are unwilling to change your mind, that that you should review them though. But if you're willing to consider this application based on the evidence in front of you. You would just put that on the record so that members of the community would know that that you have it so prejudged application that you're not willing to change your mind.
Sure, I will, I will, sorry, not personally, in form of one hundred percent, will keep an open mind and the facts on this case and make my judgment solely on what you. In this hearing.
I do feel better about that, too. And this is new for me, so intimidating, but I appreciate you clearing that up.
I'm willing to consider new evidence with a judgment call.
I'm as well. Yeah, this is a totally new case. Um, I was on a planning commission, uh, obviously, we. Got here today. So I assume there'll be new points of interest and everything, and I will keep it.
You heard that the same thing, right?
Okay, so does any member of the council wish to declare next part A con, uh, communication or site visit? Does anyone from the audience want to object to the ability of a counselor to make a fair decision?
I do. Steve Toski, City of Saint Helens. Um, I can state in writing the bases for the objections, um. For, uh, the mayor and counselor Chilton. Um, and I want to make sure. That those are on the record for the public hearing. Um. So both the mayor Shoal stated that he is accountable for the police, ma- mayor Shoal said that he's accountable. For the police station being at the current site. January fourth, twenty twenty three, at the council meeting. This was in response to the city had lost already one point five million dollars. To that date, regarding creation of architectural drawings for a twenty two thousand square foot facility at site. Rich Sholl approved and encouraged site construction before the subject conditional permit was issued. Uh, Rich Sholl was in charge of the administration. And, uh, the branch of the Saint Helens government that went forward with site selection without checking to see if it was legal to build at this site. The actual number actually was one point seven million in January of twenty twenty three. According to the financial data, which I received per public records request, it was one point seven. That was wasted up until January before twenty twenty three, not one point five million. Um, also, Rick Sholl voted for a gag law resolution nineteen sixty, restricting free speech in Saint Helens. Um, additionally, today we heard.
Rich Sholl is jacked, and I don't like to jact either. That's completely irrelevant to anything that we are.
It's not suppression of free speech in our city. It's hugely relevant. And Sholl, and I'm making it part of our record. So in the event this goes to the next hearing level.
Political stunt, please.
Okay, well, additionally, Mayor Shoal, you stated in the last hearing. Thank you. I'm continuing. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to continue. You stated in the last hearing. That the delivery of thirty six hundred cubic yards of dirt and put in a pile. In the exact location where the police station was supposed to be built was a deal that was done. Um, in furtherance of the overall industrial site. That was just a flat out.
A deal, and I did not state that. You miss, you are trying to put words in my mouth. I know there is.
Yeah, you said it was a deal on the industrial site. Not, I'm making my record. You want to respond? That's fine.
Excuse me, so continue along with your, I'm not going to sit here and do the bad cream back and forth.
What you're gonna do is you're gonna hear my record of your bias, actual bias.
That's what I'm hoping you to continue on with.
Okay.
But you're wanting to say your argument.
You interrupt.
Put words into my mouth.
You want to answer questions? How much did you know about that pile of dirt before, uh, before today? How much did you know?
A lot of interrogation.
Contact. Were you there when it got involved?
There.
I can tell you, at some point, it will be an interrogation.
Uh, it's Toski.
You know what? I'm just gonna continue to make my record. And I would ask that I.
That's what I've asked you to.
And I'm, thank you. Okay, so you had stated that the delivery of dirt onto the site was incidental to the industrial comp site. I think by anybody looking at that, the massive amount of dirt in the exact spot where we need to lift a building up three feet delivered. Three weeks ago, to have something to do with the industrial site and not this police station is. A fabrication and an obvious one. And it goes to show that you were willing to say anything or do anything to put this thing forward because there's three point one million dollars on the line. That you are gonna have to say to your constituents because of our methods of planning under your direction. Our methods of planning are poor such that we unfortunately, as citizens, are being brought into this sort of a hearing on a. Basic question of whether. A police station can be built in a flood zone. This should have happened years ago, and you you are have a huge bias in that regard, and I think it's one that you cannot possibly ignore. And so there, my record is done.
Okay.
Chapter Chilton, same things regarding you stated, uh, Counselor Chilton stated on January fourth, twenty twenty three. At the council meeting. That she was also accountable for the waste of one point five million dollars in the creation of architectural drawings. For a twenty two thousand square foot facility at the site. Again, the actual number was one point seven million. Um, and Counselor Chilton, uh, has improved, approved and encouraged site construction. Uh, also Counselor Chilton voted for the gag law resolution nineteen eighty six, restricting free speech in Saint Helens. I believe that Counselor Chilton has already made up her mind. Before this hearing is taking place, I believe that the only counselors that are capable of making a fair hearing in this regard. I fully support Counselor Sunday, Counselor Gunderson and Counselor Hubbard. I believe that they all have made it because they're not involved in any of this. There's a lot of water under the bridge and including, and I'm gonna add to this. Anybody who's involved in that land transaction that came before here, and I made my record there. You need to disclose what your involvement was right now because you have a bias, you have an interest, you involved in the sale of. City land to begin construction at this site. Which of you were involved in it? And there will, we're gonna find out eventually, so I think it's probably best we hear about that now. And why it is that it doesn't make you biased. You're already talking about making land deals, moving dirt. We can figure out who that is before you sit in judgment. Of this kind of an important thing which involves human lives. That's why I'm here. The lives of human beings.
We had another hand up.
Follow that up? I don't need to follow that up. That what that is. Uh, there's no comment needed. Um, it's nauseating. Okay, so I respectfully, Russell Hubbard, uh, counselor. Uh, I'm so happy that you're part of the committee. I was actually listening to the interview and, um, so I think, well, you're here, but. I do have an issue with you participating in the vote today. I sat through the the planning commission. Um, it's a first time I actually had. Uh, you know, seen you in action, and I'm just concerned with the fact that I listened to the same thing that you listened to and I read. Speaker identifying, oh, sorry, Jim Massey. Saint Helens. Sorry, I thought everybody knew that by now, but, um, so I do have a concern with that because hopefully you're in mind, but I do have. You looked at the same things. Listening to the same things and included a negative vote against the police department being though, so I do have a concern.
I also object to Mr. Hubbard. Um, while I think he's a reasonable person, you are the person that made the motion on the planning commission to deny this application. I don't see how you possibly can be objective. Here in this setting when you've done that. And, uh, I think you're a great vision to the council, but in this particular case, you will recuse yourself. The mayor and, uh, council president Chilton. Um, have also stated on the record multiple times their undying support for for this police station. And it is not appropriate that you now set and gonna rejudge this issue from your planning commission. When you are, the city is not only the application, but you have been stating that from the very beginning that you want the police station, you want it built in this location. And you orchestrated the fact that you're gonna have it built there, and not only that, you're putting dirt, which you just admitted, putting dirt on. On the ground, but which you say it seriously happens to be where the police station is. I don't believe that either. And you also said that you own the decision to waste the money on the original police station. Well, until you've written a check for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars piece to the city that's not owning. So I don't know if Brandon has accused himself or not. I'm confused, but I don't have a problem with Mr. Sunday making the decision. Or Mr. Gunderson making the decision in this order, because you weren't here. The rest of you, I object to.
Anybody else? Okay, well, so three of you. I've been spoken to. Uh, so each of you have an opportunity to respond. And I'm the challenged counselor. You must decide if you're gonna participate in the hearing. Um, but if any other counselor does not concur with that counselor's decision. Then you must deal with it by motion.
Sure, a lot of it has been said about my, uh, me, um, here publicly today. Um, I I've seen continued to be riddled by. Um, the individual specifically, uh, one individual. There was two that actually spoke against me. Um, I'm not an attorney. He draws his stuff at home. He brings up these quasi ideas and continues manager, uh. Uh, myself in the in the progress that this city had made. And have been nothing but a disruptor of all, most everything the city's doing because. Unfortunately, he ran as a counselor and has been preaching that he just wants to be mayor. He wants to be the steering wheel of Saint Helens. Um. And this is somebody who's not from this area, and I'll speak to that dirt. When you're dealing with assault. And dirt. The reason you need dirt in the salt is because the salt does this. You know, and as a kid, you know, for those in a heavy coffee area, you need to add feel or take away rocks and add feel. So in the site development of the property of Cascade Tissue, which was designed well before. This is all gonna be one hundred percent beneficial to our community, whether it's suitable for a police station or not. And I don't know. The 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 renderings, I recall the hearing of the renderings, uh, and having to downsize the building, which I. In the first place, said was too big, too budgeted to go. And how I felt that money was lost, but I still voted for it at the time. That has nothing to do with the site location at all. That has to do with the rendering itself, the drawing of the of that McKenzie was working on and the downsizing. I still am completely one hundred percent willing to sit up here and, uh. Have my mind go in the way, uh, yawnay through this public hearing process with the facts that are before me. On the location of the police station. The money that was spent was irrelevant. It's the design of the building. Building can be placed anywhere, so I don't even understand your, completely understand your argument, but I'm not an attorney. You are. Um, so I, that's where I stand today, here today. Um, everything that's been said about me, um. I have no issues with making a fair assessment whether this will be a suitable site or not suitable site. Um, for the facility with the facts that are given today. And I want to participate. I'm going to participate.
I'm still willing to consider new evidence, therefore I will be voting.
I think what I, uh, was, uh, proud to be on the planning commission and I faced a difficult, uh, decision. Uh, we. Station and what they need. Didn't come into effect. We looked at the building. And it was in a floodplain. The federal law says that you cannot put a critical facility in a floodplain, although they want to build above it. Uh, when I heard that, uh, Castner Road and Portland Road. Can get up to over four and a half feet of water and they can't get to the police station. My view was. Uh. One person in Saint Helens is compromised by that issue. It's not the right place for it. Another thing is if there's no other place, uh, it can be done or other locations. Well, um, I still think I can make a, uh, good judgment in front of it.
So, given, given those statements, um, does any counselor? Not concur. With any of your fellow counselors, fellow accused counselors of continuing hearing?
So Jacob, can I jump in here? Since there are. Thank you. Since there are challenges to three individual council members. I believe the proper process for determining whether or not. Any member of the council should be disqualified. Would be for those council members other than the challenged individual. By by motion, by a motion, uh, take, take a vote as to whether. An individual member of council should not be seated. So for instance, if Mayor Shoal were the first individual challenged. I believe a motion should be made by one of the other council members and those four council members other than Mayor Shoals. Should vote on whether or not Mayor Shoals should participate. And then the same process for council president Chilton and for Counselor Hubbard.
First. You want to make, that's for a lot of trouble, yes. I'm only gonna ask Bill. What would Wilson be, Bill?
Uh, motion, let's see, looking at the script that, uh. Jacob has provided to me. Um. Question would be whether or not the cha- a challenged member of council, name the individual, uh, should be allowed to participate. In tonight's proceeding. Based on their comment. On their ability to, on, ba- based on their comment that they're not biased and able to make a decision tonight based on the evidence before the council. Another alternative would be, would be a motion of whether or not to disqualify a council member.
So there would have to be a motion to disqualify or not disqualify? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to not disqualify Mayor Shaw. That work?
That works if there's a second.
Am I allowed to second if I'm?
Probably not, yes.
Actually, I think any other member of council can second a motion as long, uh, in regards to another member of council.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Am I still had? Do I call it?
Um, it'd be, it'd be better if someone else called the vote, mayor, than you not participate.
Counsel President.
Hey, Counsel Sunday. Counsel Gunderson.
Hi.
Counsel Hubbard. And I'm, I as well.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Counsel President Chilton will be, uh, a voting member.
I'll second that.
Okay, Counsel Sunday. Counsel Gunderson.
Hi.
Counsel Hubbard. And I'm I as well. Somebody like to, for us?
I'd like to make a motion that Russ be a voting member of this.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to, uh, allow Russ to be a voting member, uh, Counsel President Chilton. And Andy. Counsel Gunderson.
Hi.
And I'm I as well. Okay, we got through that process. Hey, Jacob. On to the next.
Uh, generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, which we're doing now, staff report, which I will follow. The applicant's presentation, which will be, um, two or three people, I think, uh, those in favor of the application, neutral testimony, those opposed. And your rebuttal by the applicant if desired, uh, final questions, close of the record, deliberations and decision. And deliberations would be part of the regular session. Uh, the following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to city code and R S one nine seven seven six three sub five. Following list is the applicable substantive, excuse me, criteria for this decision. Um. Chapter seventeen one hundred, Saint Helens Municipal Code seventeen one hundred, one forty in particular, uh. Seventeen forty six, Saint Helens Municipal Code, that's the chapter, um, seventeen forty six zero five zero sub six in particular. Chapter seventeen forty, Saint Helens Municipal Code, um, seventeen forty zero four zero in particular. Uh, chapter seventeen eighty eight, Saint Helens Municipal Code seventeen eighty eight zero, uh, six zero in particular. All testimony, arguments, evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria as described or other criteria in the plan, such as the comprehensive plan or land use regulations, such as that found in the development code. Which the person believes applies to the decision. Whether to raise an issue, including constitution or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or writing, or failure to raise an issue. Accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the approving authority and opportunity to respond to the issues precludes a pu- uh, appeal to Luba. Land use Board of Appeals, who's the next appellate authority on that issue, under clues action for damages in circuit court. So with all of that. The actual hearing can begin. Um. So. I've been through a lot of appeals. And. Every time, every time. You dig deeper just because there's more time. Uh, in in the first time, you're just trying to get through the staff report. Um, and you know that what I think about a lot is it's it's like you get through the report and then once you're done. Then you start thinking about it because you've kind of put everything on paper, meeting your deadline. Um. And so, uh. There is some new stuff in this, uh, case because of that. I don't know where, uh. Have you been? Yeah, that's it. Yep. All right, so. Um. This is just a general map, the old, um, and newer police patch. Because we're dealing with an old and new building. Um, there's the proposed site highlighted and just for context, existing police station. Um, just so everybody knows, the proposed site is across the street from McCormick Park, also across the street from the original recreation center and across the street from Johnny's. So second slide, why? This is something that has been talked about exhaustively. I really won't get into much. Um, but it was built in the early seventies. Population has increased, um, one hundred and thirty percent since then, which is quite a bit. Um. And technology has changed. In, uh, the early seventies, there wasn't a lot of digital. And technology has changed. In uh the early seventies, there wasn't a lot of digital stuff, for example, and now that's an important part of things. Um, next slide. So just here's the street view of the site there at the corner of Old Porton Road and, and Castor. Um, the building location proposed is approximately uh the dirt pile, these dirt pile number one. Um, which is visible in this photo, fairly flat site. Um, the eastern portion has a rocky bluff. It's roughly about ten feet of upgrade. You can't see it behind the trees there. Uh, let's talk about site characteristics on the next slide. So subject property is outlined in yellow. It's a regular shaped property. You have rights of way, public rights way on all sides. Um, only two of them are developed, uh Castor and Old Porton Road. They lack frontage improvements and that just means um curb. Well, there's some curb there, but sidewalk, um, street trees, that kinda stuff. Um. The rocky bluff, you can kinda see in the upper right hand corner, there's a circle of trees. That's where that uh rock bluff is at. Uh, we do have some wetlands. There's a much larger complex. Um, that's a city significant wetland, which includes a fifty percent um. There are fifty foot, excuse me, upland buffer. It's not shown on there. There's a smaller kidney shaped one too, that's not significant to the city. That just means our rules don't care about it, but the state still does. Um, the law is not proposed to be impacted anyways. Um, just wanna note the flood pattern, of course, that's one of the bigger discussions that we have here. Um, the one hundred year is in blue, the five hundred year is in uh purple. Uh, and then I also wanna note fifteenth street because that's something where we'll talk about a little bit. It's identified there. Just beyond the upper right hand corner of the site. Alright, so some of the boring uh code stuff. This is a public safety facility, it is conditional use in this zoning district, and that just means it needs a condition use permit. Um, the uh authority for a condition use permit is the planning commission. Um, of course, we know what happened there. It was appealed and now uh the council has it as the appellate thor- uh authority for that. There's. You know, a lot of stuff at the record. You're gonna hear a lot of information. And your head may explode. Uh. But the, the basic thing to think about is this one condition to use um criteria. That the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use, considering the size, shape, location, topography, natural features. Basically, does it make sense? That's what you have to ask yourself. In the end, does it make sense, based on all the stuff you're gonna hear? Um. Police station also is also considered a critical facility uh for, per um the floodplain rules. So there's, there's a higher bar of review for uh critical facilities uh when they are in a floodplain. And it's usually when they are in a one hundred year floodplain uh when that applies. Uh, the next slide just talks about the planning commission denial stuff. Um. McKenzie, they've, they've provided some uh revised stuff, which oh, I'm assuming they're gonna submit to the record as part of their presentation. I'm just gonna focus on that condition to use permit criteria. Basically, does it make sense? Um. And I, I think a good way to help evaluate that is just looking at the pros and the cons. Uh, so we're start with the cons. Um, so here is the uh flood. Data, uh, a little bit zoomed out. Um, note some mushrooming or, or damming behind both uh Columbia River Highway. And Old Porton Road, and that's one of the things that we're, we're kinda observed uh in this going, huh, okay, well, this is something to deal with. Um. The subject property is on the fringe of the flood area. The, 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 the more significant aspect of it is the um. Old Porton Road frontage and the intersection of Castor and Old Porton Road, which do have show that um. One hundred year uh inundation. Now, I should note, we did, cuz we were looking at this early on going, this is weird, you know, it was really a head scratcher. And so. We thought, okay, well, maybe we can do what's called a map amendment. What that does. Is cuz FEMA, you know, they have these maps they create, um but it doesn't necessarily. Capture all the fine details. And so if you can provide the right evidence, you can amend the map. And, and back in twenty one, yeah, well, maybe, maybe it doesn't make sense. Um, we did. Uh, consult with, with West Consulting hydrologists and um. The, based on their modeling, the, the, the flood data was worse. Um, the, the mushrooming by Old Porton Road, cuz that's what I was focusing on. Um. Being kinda worried about it when I looked at the, the model data and it showed that the five hundred year encompassed more of the lot. Uh, McKenzie in the revised materials notes that that is not anything final, not subject to the public record. But it is one of the reasons internally. Um, we thought, well, we really should raise this just for the sake of resiliency. Um, if this thing is here fifty years, we just wanna be uh extra sure, uh we're not gonna have any problems. And um fifteenth street is labeled there. If you note, um, when we look at the site plan, you'll see this, this backdoor access. And the reason it goes to fifteenth street is to dodge those floodlines, the, the, the blue floodline um that you see on there. Uh, so next slide, please. Now, the official flood data that we have consists of maps and the flood insurance study. And the flood insurance study is a bunch of text and then um these, these profiles. And. Sometimes determining the, the flood elevation is easier. Uh, for example, on the Columbia River. Um, the, the elevations don't change so much. In this case, you have um some substantial slope to it. So any single point on the property could be a different elevation. Made a, a real challenge for us, just kinda figuring it out. Um, and one thing I wanna point out, and this is one of the things that's kinda kept me up at night for a while on, on this. Um, is that that steep slope right, right in the middle of, of the uh profile. Yeah, that's Old Porton Road and that is at the subject property. So, slide please. This represents some of the data that you would see on the formal flood map. Um, this isn't a formal, formal flood map, it's just one that I, I, I created for this purpose. Um, but I figured, well, you know, we better do a little bit of flood uh information, education. Not to put it to you, put you asleep, but we have to understand what's going on here. So. In the floodplain world, there's a variety of flood zones. Uh, the ones that we deal with mostly. Um, in Columbia County is the A and the A E zone. Basically, that's the hundred year floodplain. Um, the difference between the two is the A E zone has designated base flood elevations. So those are the orange lines that you see on there. The A zone doesn't. Um, in the city, we don't have any A zones. Those are all in the county. Um, I've worked in the county too, so I dealt with those. So if, if, if this was a county property, we'd look at that flood profile. And, and make a, a, a guess. When we have these base flood elevations, you can make a much more accurate or microscopic. Uh, guess, um, just because you have these lines that tell you what the, the height is, at least per the data. Um, so remember that steep. Blood profile that we saw. Uh, there's four. Base flood elevations on there that I have highlighted. Um, so if you go to the subject property and you, you look through the upper left just a little bit. Um, you'll see a, a seventy two big flood elevation and then you get to Old Porton Road and it's seventy. You know, that's over four hundred feet, a difference of uh two feet, so very, very shallow uh. Flow profile. Then you get to uh the bottom part of Old Porton Road. And you have a, a seventy foot base flood elevation. And then it drops down to sixty three feet as a matter, in a matter of forty feet. So that's a, that's a crazy drop. It's a difference of seven feet. Um, and that's one of the things when we were looking at this going, holy cow. Um, so that's kinda, that's been the holy cow factor for us i- in looking at this. You see a similar jump. And I know it's probably hard to see the numbers, but there is a similar jump up by the highway. Um, there's a, a difference of six feet, but the, those base flood elevations are a little bit more spread. They're not so close together like those ones. Um, and because that seemed weird, that was one of the reasons we did that uh additional study. I do wanna point out some details. The flood data is both for insurance and development purposes. We have. Rules and code for development purposes. We don't do insurance, of course. We answer a lot of questions from people though, and we also have uh what are called elevation certificates that we keep on file. So people uh wanna buy a house, um they checked to see if that's on file um. To help with flood insurance purposes. We have this data because we are, are a participating community in the flood insurance program. Um, which was started, I think, in the sixties and that just means our citizens are eligible for flood insurance. And to do that, we have to have all these laws and have all this fun like we're having here. Um, the five hundred, like I said earlier, only matters for critical facilities. Um, but it's an inventory hazard, so it's a good thing to, to, to look at and consider. You know, ultimately, when you're thinking about everything, is does the site make sense for a police station? We'd be remiss not to at least mention it. Uh, so next slide, please. So we're looking a little bit closer at the uh property now. And um. Remember those two designated base flood elevations, they're shown there. You can see that um they're kind of on the, the side of the property. Uh, of Old Porton Road and actually on, on the property itself. Um. We use the west corner of the building to determine the base flood elevation. The, the line on these maps is the gospel for insurance purposes, for development purposes, it's an approximation. And so we have to, okay. Floodplains on there, we need to look at it a bit, look closer. Um, and in looking at it. I believe that the hundred year is still away from the building, but it is a, a little bit, well, it's just about touching the point. Um, but it's, you know, it's on the fringe. How accurate is that? I think there's enough margin of error that I'm comfortable saying that at least the building footprint. Um, is not within, within the mapped. Um, one hundred year. Uh, but, but a little bit of site improvements are, of course, the main access, as you can see in blue is. Um, and another thing I wanna point out, this is gonna help us with the next slide. You see a yellow line on there. Um. This is, I just wanted to be able to graphically show this, and I got the idea from McKenzie uh having some profiles. And um I picked this location because it's all about the same uh elevation. And there's those base flood elevations actually fall. There's one of those um art poles, there's one of those flying guillotine um art poles. Uh, and then um the sign, so I was able to use those things to get a. Fairly accurate uh depiction of at least what the map data shows. Uh, so if we go to the next slide. So. The yellow line um is the ground level. Um, basically the bottom of the poles and then the, the blue line shows. Uh, at least at where that yellow line was at, what, what the data shows. And it's showing uh roughly five feet. Um, you know, and it depends where you're at on there. Um.
How do you determine this? And I, I, I apologize, but coming back originally, I was trying to follow what's the thing, but how do you determine this?
Okay, let, let, let's back up, yes. If, if we go to the, the. So. You see that orange line?
Yeah.
So that orange line is the official flood data. That's a, a, a base flood elevation in our flood data. So, for example, the upper left hand one is a seventy foot flood elevation. So, okay, well, we look at that and then we look at the actual elevation below it. And then make sure they're the same vertical datum, cuz there's different datums which could mess things up. That might be TMI. But we might, we just wanna make sure we're measuring apples to apples. And it's basically, it's a subtraction.
So who provides these numbers? Is this the FEMA?
So the, the base flood elevation is FEMA. Um, the contour data is from our LiDAR flight. That we did when we uh. Did this work? Uh, was that last spring or two springs ago? Once, you know how time is.
Little bit.
Um, so the, so the LiDAR data is very accurate. Um. And you know, one question is how accurate do you think the flood data is? I'm gonna uh talk about that uh well, pretty soon. So basically, we look at the line, we look at the elevation, we do a subtraction and that results in. Yes, based on the flood data, how deep that water would be. Um, if we go back to that one slide. And so, that was kinda the issue. Okay, well, if, if this is accurate. We potentially have a problem at the intersection and on Old Porton Road. And so. That's, you know, one of the major things to think about um in, in the suitability of the site for this use. Um, next. Oh, I'm not ready for that one. Sorry, Kathy. Um, so I, I did a little bit more um digging. Um, I just wanna understand it more. Is one of the things I said, I mean, that's weird, right? You, I'm guessing it's some turbulent thing, um but the road isn't that high. So I did a little bit of digging to see how far back this data goes. Um, the U S Army Corps of Engineers originally did an analysis in eighty six. Our original flood map was adopted in eighty eight and we had to update it in two thousand and ten. It was actually updated by West Consulting, believe it or not. Um, the, the data is based on the W S P two computer program. Which dates to nineteen seventy six. And I was looking at that today and back then they used punch cards. So it's like, hmm, that's interesting. Um. So that's something to, to think about. You know, how much do you wanna rely on this seventies data? I mean, the, the, the program. Is almost as old as the police station. Um, just some interesting things. Uh, I know we talk about the ninety six flood being um a, a typical one to evaluate the largest. But in looking at our, our flood study, uh according to that, the largest Milton Creek flood was December nineteen fifty five. Um, and it, and it talks about largest floods in the county and mentioning the other years um for the river. So I, I don't know if anybody's around um who was here in fifty five, but that's probably the best example of. Uh, a larger flood and I, I, I was able to find um. This document from the U S G S from nineteen fifty six. Um, in Oregon, heavy rains and warm weather caused severe floods between December twenty first to twenty twenty three and again on December twenty sixth. Floods were most severe in southeastern Oregon, of course, we don't care about that, um and northwestern Oregon here. Where discharges were of record or near record magnitude. Um, so that would be the best example, um if there's any record of uh fifty five. If this was appealed again, um which, you know, the record closes once it goes to Luba, you know, the next step would pass the museum just to see what they have. But I thought that was just interesting, interesting things to talk about. So, and, and McKenzie. May have some aspects of their presentation that disputes the flood data. Um. Not sure, but I think they will. So, uh, next slide. Now, these, I don't know if I would call these cons, maybe minor cons, but just some, some noteworthy things. Um. The original police station is the yellow star, the proposed site is the blue star. The current one is amongst the grid, so you have good pedestrian access, um a whole bunch of street parking. And this one's kinda going to the edge of it, and so you don't have that anymore. You know, it's not necessarily a deal killer, but it's just a, you know, a thing to uh note. Um, and the planning commission, you know, we did talk to them uh about that and. They didn't seem to comment on it. So, uh next slide, we're gonna talk about the pros. Um. Now Winston Churchill said the farther back you look, the farther forward you are likely to see. And I, I think it's important to look back at the process to see what we have learned. It tells the story. Um. Which feeds into, you know, why or why, why not? Um. Does it make sense for um a police station? It, cuz it identifies the values. Um, so if we go to the next slide, let's talk about the sites considered. So originally, um. The phase one, the first part of the selected process, um included ten properties. And those are all the um highlighted properties there, red, yellow, and green.
Can you briefly tell me about who and what? Who, who's fighting back or looking? I wasn't on the council.
I have no idea. I have no idea. Um, I I was not a part of that, and I mentioned that at the planning commission meeting. And when I said that, I didn't mean it as a criticism, oh, you're gonna go be, it wasn't anything like that. I just said it because I'm a third party looking back, and you know, I don't necessarily know all the information. So I really don't know what was the basis for those ten. I just know that those were the ones involved.
So when I recall, I think I recall members of the ad hoc committee, which I think had a couple of. I think help pick from these, or all ten of these sites and help narrow down to, cuz it does. I hope you continue this, because it narrowed down to four.
Might have different colors.
I'm just asking for historical since I.
Insights. Russell's on that committee.
Um, so it was narrowed down to four, that was phase two, the yellow and the greens. Um, and that included the existing police station, that was one error I made when I talked to the planning commission. I didn't realize that the police station wasn't included in that. What threw me off was, uh, they they used the Columbia Boulevard address, cuz they included other abutting properties. Um, so the police station was included in that. And then, uh, the subject property, oh. The subject property in green was the one that was selected for further study. Just a couple of observations. The property is more directly impacted by the floodplain. Were not selected, they didn't even go to phase two. Um, and when you look at it, it's like the outliers were eliminated, so it's you're you're more in the center of at least the east side of town. Um, and just something I wanna know for a future slide, are the two largest red properties, I'll mention those. When we talk about the ability to expand. So really, the first value shown here is geographic location. So there was this, the scoring system for the phase two as a tool to help kind of figure out. Um, how it was all gonna play out. And I would just note, the the land use aspect there, number three, site three is the subject property. That's what included the floodplain. And two means less suitable. So that just meant there was a storm ahead, and here we are. I would also point out that there is no explicit hazard or natural hazard score. Which actually is is good. Because it was basically distilled down to four. Um, and that may not look good if there was a hazard standard that was discarded. And and there's no legal basis to use this, this is a tool. So, um, the ad hoc committee that was mentioned a little bit, that's the next slide. The planning commission talked about that, and uh. I I'm only mentioning it, I think. There's always things that could have been done better when you look at the process. And I was looking at some order of Mackenzie documentation where it identified the floodplain. It wasn't identified here at all, and and it's even identifying the wetlands. And I think, you know, when stuff like that happens, it it begets mistrust. And that just, in a small town, that doesn't work, and I I don't think helped. And let's move on. So, uh, the website identifies the um. The four standards that were boiled down to, uh, February nineteenth. Um, at the work session, and this is when the the values of police personnel was established. Basically by Chief Greenway here. Now, there wasn't anything in the packet. For that, and I mentioned that. Because at at this point, uh, I'm thinking about this permitting process. And the Mackenzie scoring system was very elaborate, and there's probably a lot of information that you can glean from. Um, and there's not a lot to glean from here, and I'm just thinking of, okay, you know, what can we get into? Um, the application to 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 strengthen it. Cuz like I said, you know, I'm looking at this flood data going, holy cow, holy cow. And, uh, you know, I don't want this to be a circus, but it ended up being one anyways. Next slide. So we're gonna talk about these a little bit. Um, so what the heck's this? Why did I put this here? Well, it's Halloween. It's it's. Ready to change. Little city ownership, yes, you know, you're saving money, that's kind of a given. The reason I put this here is, you know, I was trying to think of how how to explain this. And what I've been anxious about since that date was putting meat on the skeleton. Um, we have the statements, but you literally wanna bring bring those out, you know, in situations like this. Um, bodies like planning commissions are very analytical, so they wanna be able to really understand the things. So you're adding flesh to the skeleton. And. I wanna mention, we have a lot of officers here. You are the boots-on-the-ground people. You know, I can make maps and draw stuff, but I don't know, I don't know law enforcement. I went under right along in Assland in the nineties. You have the opportunity to testify. If you testify, it goes into the minutes. And if if that testimony relates to why this site is the appropriate site. Especially if you connect it to some of these items that we're talking about, it will strengthen the record. And in the event that it is appealed, that provides more tools for legal counsel to use. In in a defense, and so I think public testimony from the officers who live and breathe this stuff every day would be valuable. I know public speaking isn't the funnest thing, um, I did, I did wanna point that out. So, the other, the next thing was accessibility. It was noted that the officers liked this site for access purposes. And when I was thinking about this, I'm like, oh, God, I, and I just thought of this yesterday without testimony, I don't know what I'm gonna say. And I'm like, wait a minute, this is on the corner of Arterial and Collector Street, that's that's a pretty good start. Um, and so that's why I have this, this is from a transportation systems plan. Um, you're at the confluence of two higher classified streets, and so, you know, that that's a, that's a decent basis for accessibility.
Yeah, Jacob, could I interject? Cuz I, I mean, I can talk about anything that we've already done prior to this. Um, and and so you talk about the meat on the bone, it got there on the four sites.
Yeah, I would, I.
Okay, but.
This deliberation?
No, it's not deliberation, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where we're going with this, if you're walking through the process.
Like, I am, I'm adding meat.
That's all, I thought there was some missteps.
It was just that ad hoc committee and not talking about everything that probably should have been talked about. That was the only thing. Now I'm just talking about reinforcing the the values. That police personnel established for this site, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out where he's going with it, I I follow.
That's okay. Um, and I'm trying to go fast, cuz this will be a long meeting, probably. So accessibility, so here's, here's one good reason why. This site is is valuable from an accessibility standpoint. So, the next one, um, then this was talked about a lot, the ability to expand. One of the comments was, hey, you know what? We've been suffering for decades, you know, let's make sure we have land. So future generations of officers don't have to suffer through deficient facilities. And I I was initially worried about this one as the process was going through. Because it was kind of a a tight fit, but once it expanded. Onto this other property, and that was, that's what the red shaded is for. You have over an acre of practical expansion space. Um, it it it's, it exceeds any of the other sites from an expansion standpoint. And so the ability to expand, that was a value noted, um, and that's why I created this exhibit. Now, another one that was noted was, uh, this is the next slide. Access to US thirty including the rail crossings. Having an overpass or underpass is probably a pipe dream, maybe we'll have one someday. But for now, we don't, and um. Like I said, I've been thinking about putting meat on the bone for a while with the planning commission. Um, in the staff report, I just had some numbers in there. But when it came to the appeal, the anti's higher, well, I'm gonna draw this out, I I like to be able to visually see it. Um, and once I drew it out, I'm going, holy cow. I mean, that property is is very centered in all the 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 routes that we use for the the various railroad crossings. Uh, within the city's urban growth area. And and it probably is the superior site from that standpoint. Uh, the other reason to have a map is if it goes to Luba. You know, the 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 people reviewing it, it's usually two or three, I can't remember, it's been a while. Um, but they're gonna have a record that's hundreds and hundreds of pages. And you can find a needle in a haystack, or you can find an image to capture it, so that's why we have this. Um, so. Now we have some meat on the bones for the values as distilled through the process. Um, we'll probably have more from the testimony tonight. Um, and I hope that helps you think about the question is, does it make sense for the police station? Does the site make sense? Um, so some other mentionables, if we go to the next slide. That's just what the station will look at. So we'll go to the site plan. Now, most of the code stuff is man, uh, there wasn't really a a problem there. Um, Mackenzie may go into it, I'm not gonna get into much of that stuff. I wanna talk about just a couple of things, though. Um, so I mentioned the wetland, the big wetland, it had the fifty-foot upland protection zone, you can see some of that on this map. That protection zone is impacted by the the secondary access by site grading and a little bit by the secure parking. Um, and one of the things we have to look at, okay, well, is this impact justified? Um, and it's it's easy pickings, uh, in in this case. Having observed the site plan develop over the years. I'm totally comfortable that every effort was taken to avoid the impact. And then also, if we go to the next slide, that secondary in uh access, there's a sewer line in there. And why, oh, this is an old road base, so it's a, it's a previously impacted area. Which just makes it easier to be okay with. Uh, next slide, so we have a planned roundabout for this site. This has been in our books for a while, it's not planned right now. It would probably cost so much that the police would end up with a building smaller than what they have now. And that really doesn't solve anything, um, and we don't have a design for it yet either. Um, this this would address some of the the. Pedestrian shortcomings of the intersection sometime in the future. If we go to the next slide, we're gonna look at the site plan a little bit more zoomed out. Um, so here you can see that secondary access a lot better, that curves around to Fifteenth Street. To avoid uh the the flood areas. And the reason I brought up that roundabout, so I mentioned we're not gonna do that. And if you look, you see that red line and the green line. The red line is along Old Port Road and Castor, and then the green line is along Castor on the other side of the driveway. It's a pretty typical thing for us when we have a project that it has a great value to require frontage improvements. The sidewalk, street trees, all that, all that stuff. And, but because the roundabout doesn't have a design yet. Um, we didn't wanna do that along Old Port Road. But it's it's common for it to require it, so like, well, this there's this issue of fairness. If people see us allow this with nothing, um, there's the potential of them screaming bloody murder. So what made sense for us for that expansion area. Um, which wouldn't be impacted by the roundabout design, but the frontage improvements to go there, and that's in the green. Um, now you could potentially make some argument that government has a higher purpose, and we'll have to build it anyways. And you're developing a second access road, um, but that's not how the decision is set up. And the planning commission did kind of frown upon that approach too. Um, you'll see a couple arrows on there, I'll talk about the uh. Horizontal area arrows first. Um, we talked about the value of the ability to expand, and that just shows how. Um, internal access could expand onto the expansion area. And then I will point out the vertical areas, arrows, excuse me. So that secondary access is is mostly a twenty twenty-foot wide restricted access authorized personnel only. We asked the the planning commission about public inclusion. Uh, could the public use that, would it be intended for the public? And when it was a public safety facility, when you had courts and IT and other uh. Things with it, um, it it made some sense, but once it morphed into the police station, it was made restricted. Um, the the planning commission. Didn't really talk about the 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 public access part of it, but they did. Um, talk about whether or not twenty feet was wide enough, and they suggested that. You know, if that's, if this is needed in an emergency situation, that it should be twenty-four feet. Twenty-four feet is this our standard parking lot aisle width for two-way traffic. Next. Um, within the parking lot, there is a uh. Fire apparatus turnaround designed in there, an extra precaution in a flood event. Um, and that also allows only one gate to be open if there's a problem on Castor Road. We talked to the fire department about, you know, flood depths and stuff. And they talked about how the 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 lowest common denominator would be hand vehicles and ambulances, which are six feet to the front axle. If we assume that the flood depth's gonna be higher than that, we have to assume that it's not gonna allow fire access. And so that's why we kind of looked at making sure that this road was suitable for fire. Uh, with that turnaround, some of the earlier plans had it only twelve feet wide, um, or something like that, if I remember right. Uh, next slide, uh, this is just a closer graphic of the ability to expand. One of the conditions is to make sure we have a good thirty-six-foot clearance area, so the uh. It basically can be a mirror image of walkway and roadway from the other side. So in conclusion, the site was designed to be approved under the circumstances. Um, with the extra precaution of elevating the site. There is an assumption that the hundred-year flood will have some degree of impact based on the data that we have. Um, and so that's one of the things you gotta just think about, is is the site appropriate? The impact is assumed to be primarily access, um, but you know, it's limited term, low percentage. It's just that, it's that, you know, you weighing, you're weighing the pros and cons. You have the bridge there too, the bridge is a potential weak point, but al-also a a low probability. Uh, the bridge does likely be hit by vehicles. Um, and um, so it's just something to think about, it's not to say, oh, your camera broke, there's a bridge. This is one of the factors you wanna think about, cuz we try to be comprehensive when we think about these kind of things. Um, so there's a compelling argument here, you just have to think about, does it make sense? Um, and if you do, if you do recommend approval. Um, the recommendation would be to uh recommend, to approve with the conditions as recommended by staff. Which are buried in the record. Uh, so that's all of my stuff, um, as far as the city applicant. You wanna go before chief? Or you want the chief to go first?
I wanna make just a couple of comments, then I'm gonna hand it over to chief, and he's gonna talk about kind of the needs of his department. Sorry. Yes, Peter Watts, I'm an attorney, um, I've been practicing for. I've been practicing for a little over twenty years. I've been practicing for a little over twenty years. I practice municipal and land use law, and I practiced extensively in um Columbia County. Uh, here in St. Helens years ago, and then in San Antonio quite recently. I was brought in about two and a half, three weeks ago. Uh, and I reviewed the staff report with the planning commission. Um, and then I subsequently reviewed the. The uh staff report for this evening. And so I I I just wanna gra- round things, because when I first read this. Uh, the first read the planning commission staff report, I was very. So. There are FEMA maps that are acknowledged, and legally speaking, those are the only maps that we're allowed to use. Um, obviously, there was a fairly catastrophic flood in nineteen ninety-six that impacted a lot of communities in Columbia County. There was a lot of, as I understand, it's still on the ground, and there was a tropical storm, so there was a huge melting event. There was a lot of water that came. And my further understanding um is that there was catastrophic failure, some pumps and other. They came by the drainage district that that impacted different communities. And so it was, it was kind of the incredibly unlikely confluence of events. And and based for that and other reasons, these areas were remounted in two thousand and ten, which is actually fairly recent. And what I can say is the portion of the site where the bu- building envelope is. Objectively speaking, is not in the flood plain. Before any dirt was mounted. Before it was added, we're talking about the building envelope to the police station, it was not in the flood plain. And then I would just say that um. In Oregon, you know, I think a lot of people are aware, we have a a structural specialty building code, so it's a uniform code statewide. And code specialty code section one six zero four point five. Classifies police station buildings, but not property. As risk category four, or being Ivy, the they like the Roman numerals. Um, essential facilities. So the Oregon Building Specialty Code says, when we're looking at. Those critical essential facilities, uh, which includes police station buildings. But but not other property. That's what we look at. So we're looking at free dirt on the site. A site that is outside of the flood plain or the police station building itself. And I'm gonna turn it over to chief, uh, uh, make some comments.
Keith Adrian is gonna write a pretty nice slides for you.
Okay.
She can chair the evening council, Chief Ryan Greenway, St. Helens Police Department, and sitting next to me, I invited. Detective Dylan Gaston, who is the St. Helens Police Association President. Um, as we speak tonight before you, asking you to overturn. The planning commission's recommendation and approve the site. So after I speak, there's gonna be people with a lot of initials behind their name in engineering and architect degrees. What I speak to you about is leadership. And collective leadership.
Just gonna object, doesn't it? I mean, he can say his volations, but. All of this testimony should go directly to criteria, and I can tell you, the presentation by staff didn't go to criteria. I can tell you the criteria are stated, and I just want to say they're for they're for criteria. None of the testimony so far has gone to criteria except for what the attorney just said. Just wanna state an objection, Steve Toski, objection.
Thank you.
That that we shouldn't be wasting our time listening. This this hearing should be focused on the applicable criteria. You have a legal decision to make based on criteria.
Well, I was uh. I was getting to why it's important for our background, so that builds to the criteria of why this type of selective. Um, so I'm gonna talk uh briefly on our current station, and I don't know if we can pull aside. Adrian, do you have the slides? You know, I'll just touch on this. Um, first and before you begin, I wanna thank the police officers around their own time. And these are the the officers, the men and women that your decision tonight is gonna impact. So keep that in mind, and they're here for a reason. They're here because they are passionate about this new police station, because they spend the majority of their lives in it. And they will in serving our community. So that's why these officers are here on their own time. If you are on duty, have to leave for a call. Um, not getting paid to people on their own time and here because of their passion and they're members of the community. So our current police station is not scientifically sound. What what that means, we're sitting here talking about a flood zone. A flood? We know is coming. An earthquake, not all the time.
It's like a running. I just want a running objection that my objection is preserved, because. Oh, I'm not. Okay, my record, I just want the record to reflect, I'm making a run, I'm just asking for a running objection, so I don't have to keep making it.
Thanks for the record. You don't get to do that, Steve.
No, this is a legal hearing. I get to. I'm gonna mean this. I can tell you, we're not in court. You don't get to object and interrupt other people's.
Yes, I I'm gonna actually, thank you. I'm gonna refer to our attorney, Bill Monahan.
Thank you, Mr.
Being interrupted by uh Mr. Toski, who keeps trying to object in the middle of testimony, and it's very disrupting, and it's happened twice now.
Mr. Mary, you have the ability to create time, place, and manner limitations on the presentations. You have not put a time limit on the uh staff, of course, to uh identify what the application is, so. I think that uh your planner just did a uh nice job of giving you the background of the of the process. You're now in the hearing format where you're taking public testimony. I haven't heard you state any time limitations, but. It is inherent upon the applicant, which is in the city. To meet the burden of proof of showing that all of the criteria have been met. So Mr.
And then there'll be testimony for in favor of, neutral, and opposed, and then a rebuttal from the applicant, like typical.
Correct. Mr. Toski, Mr. Toski is correct. At the at the end of the hearing.
Okay, I I explained the process. I just wanna make sure that. Yes, thank you.
But I what I wanted to add, though, Mr. Mayor, is that the criteria has to be addressed, and that's what your decision has to be based on. If there is other testimony that's given on other uh aspects, that's certainly freedom of speech and the opportunity to provide that. If the council is willing to uh allow that testimony without placing uh time restrictions.
Yes, I I do wanna make. I was focusing on the condition used permit standard. I'm I'm kind of paraphrasing it. That it makes sense, but it's the one I mentioned at first, that the site is suitable for blah, 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 blah.
Right.
So is is it like the the current police station? It's not size of concern, so the chance of a earthquake happening is is possible, and the building would collapse on us. We we cannot occupy this any longer than we do. And again, I I sit here and and. And report this as our officers' families here. And it's unacceptable the current working conditions that they're in and the dangers that we expose them to, in that alone, in my opinion. The existing building is about twenty-two hundred square feet. The average size American home is eighteen hundred square feet. The average size living room in a home is between a hundred and fifty and three hundred and eighty square feet. A home that we live in, we don't occupy it all the time. It's like our police station. However, the living room is the focal point. We have twenty-three employees in a three hundred square foot area. It's absolutely up. That we we allow our employees to work in this environment. But mostly, what's the most important, I don't wanna lose sight of, this police station, although the officer would benefit, is for our community. And I'm gonna give you two examples of what I know and how we are failing our community what with our existing station. The first one, I I I happened upon myself personally. I work out of a trailer with no running water in the restroom, so I had to use the facilities, and I walked across the parking lot, and it's a torrential downpour. It was last October. There's a gentleman in a wheelchair, getting soaking wet elderly. He had come up on to make a police report, and he couldn't traverse past the flagpole, and he couldn't access, because it's not ADA accessible. I engaged in conversation with him, he wound up by a police report, I was able to get inside the station. We failed this gentleman as leaders of the city because of that. The second thing I wanna point out is we had a young lady come in and report a sexual assault, a rape. Violent rape that she reported, and we had to take her in a classroom. That the door entry had duct tape on, had our ballistic helmets in, and and tried to comfort this victim of a heinous crime. In this facility, unacceptable. It's unacceptable to me, and I know it's unacceptable to me, certainly unacceptable to the residents we serve. I don't want. Our testimony tonight and this decision to focus on things other than serving the community. We need a new police station for our community. And there's other reasons. So I'm gonna tell you about our projected location. It was touched on a little bit, and you can see the pictures, what we have. That is absolutely unacceptable, that our officers work in that condition, and we've said it here time and time again. We are on the cusp of making a most important decision for the city of St. Helens residents. And I implore you to please make the right decision and approve this permit. So the projected location, so we worked with Mackenzie, we had the ad hoc committee, we looked at ten sites throughout the city. And some were owned by the city, some were owned by private uh land, and then we whittled it down to three sites. The reason we came to this is that. Four four main reasons. One, we're looking at location, 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 location. We just experienced a Halloween parade and Halloween town pumpkin lighting where we drew twenty thousand visitors into our community. We want this new building to be on Front Street. We need this building to be on display, so people coming into the community feel safe. And they do. When you go into a community, you see a police officer, or you see a police station, you feel safe. It's no different. We want it, we wanna showcase this. We wanna be in the public. We don't wanna be hidden. Some of those locations we looked at, we're kind of hidden, and we don't want that. We want to be in the police. That is exactly why our cars are specifically marked. Various colors. We don't wanna blend in. We want you to know we're here to help you and serve you. The second reason is the site that was selected at Castor OPR is owned by the city. There's no out-of-pocket expenses. The money's there, we own it. The third reason justification it was selected is because we're able to grow, and Jacob touched on that. If our forefathers would have had the wherewithal to think about the station they put fifty-two years ago. And said, you know what, maybe in fifty-two years, they might have to expand this. We probably wouldn't be having this conversation. So we're doing a disservice to generations to come, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, by putting a burden on them fifty years from now, when the city of St. Helens could possibly explode in population. And they're at the same seat going, well, we don't have the funding, we don't have this. So that gives us an opportunity. To to grow and expand this location, which better serves the community. But the most important reason, and the reason I I'm I'm very proud of the officers in this room, is that they selected this location. There's over two hundred years of law enforcement experience in our police department. For active shooter events. Hundreds of critical incidents events that these officers have mitigated successfully. So this wasn't a decision that, oh, the police chief wants to put it here. Absolutely not. These decisions aren't made in the vacuum. These decisions are imperative that we make it for the right reasons. I don't know if it's just me, or if anybody else in this community gets stuck at St. Helens and and thirty by the train, or go go by a trip, you know, that I I am a magnet for that train. The reason that we selected this location. So our officers can traverse the city, whether McNulty Way, and they have a way to get across the train. And I'll tell you, and you're probably gonna hear testimony time, you have officers in this room that responded to the retirement home fire last year. The fire department took thirty-three minutes to get there. Can you imagine if if for some, if that happened at noon, and we had a train, and those officers could not get there to rescue those elderly? They save lives, folks. That's why this place was selected. The countless overdoses in Narcan and CPR that they continually on a monthly basis respond to and save our citizens' lives. They can't get there. We have a saying in police work, if you can't arrive, you can't assist. Well, the reason this was selected was for the future and our residents. This is not us being selfish. This is us having the wherewithal to think possibly and think in the future, okay, St. Helens is gonna grow. We need to be able to traverse the city. Our current location isn't gonna work. It's congested, i- it's hard to get in and out, even on routine patrol. This allows us to expand and allows us, our officers, to to get into the serve the residents that we have. But more importantly, what is lost, and this is where the experience comes in. If there's a catastrophic incident or a flood, and I talked to officers that were here in ninety-six. And it wasn't a flood. It was a flood, but it didn't affect that intersection. They drove over it. Our officers do not respond from the station. They are in the community proactively policing. The chance of them being at a police station during the flood, they're gonna be evacuated. They're gonna be outside that. They're not gonna be working on a police station. And like in what we do on a daily basis, we adjust, we improvise, we overcome. You know, if there is a flood, we won't be at the police station. We're uh we're capable of doing our job outside. But what I don't wanna finish up here without telling our council. We are short officers. It it is a given. We are probably gonna have to recruit new officers due to the upcoming retirements. We are behind the power curve. We, the council was gracious enough, and the residents are gracious enough to raise the the pay of our officers to retain them. But really, that's all we have, is the pay, and it's not, it's not astronomical. It's on par with the other metropolitan agencies. The housing out here is hard to come by. There's no housing. And I could tell you from experience, when we get applicants to this city. And they say, what are, what's my schedule? Are you hiring? And they see where their current condition is of the police station they have to work. They are not coming here. They are gonna go to other metropolitan departments and work where they have a a professional. Uh, police facility with restrooms, enough locker space, showers, I have twenty-three employees in eighteen lockers currently. Where does, where do we, again, throw that a hundred, uh, three hundred and fifty foot square, that's where we keep all our stuff. So I'm passionate about this, because I I don't want this to get lost into an argument or a political discussion. At the end of the day, we need cops to keep our community safe. This is gonna help us recruit and retain. The officers. There's officers in this room that I have a conversation with, that depending on this hope goes. If it doesn't go the way we're hoping to, and this is not a threat, this is reality, what I deal with on a daily basis. They won't be employed here this time next year. They'll be employed in another agency, and we can't get cops here. So the decision laying on your shoulders tonight is imperative that you make the right decision. I implore you, please. Think of the officers, think of their families, but more importantly, think of our residents. Think of that young lady who was a victim of a sexual assault. Giving testimony in a rundown, dilapidated, mold-filled trailer. We're better than that as leaders, and I need you to make the right decision. So Dylan Gaston, uh, the union president, I don't know if he wants to talk. We do have some officers that are probably gonna speak to this, so.
I think Chief pretty much did a great job of uh kind of conveying the current state of the building that we're in. Uh, that we talked about it for hours about all the shortcomings, unfortunately, due to the no fall period, and it's just it's past time, this. We've grown too much, and it's it's should have happened decades ago, but. Um, I think Jacob's PowerPoint gives some good insight as to how many variables were considered uh when this decision was made. Uh, the PowerPoint also reminds us that council made a unanimous decision regarding the location. Um, Jacob also specifically mentioned uh law enforcement input, um, and I can say with confidence that officers that I've talked to are fully behind this location. Um, in fact, the centralized and accessible location is a big part of the reason that that is our preference. So I wanna remind everyone, this decision was not rushed. Um, it wasn't made without careful consideration for all of these aspects. Um, subject matter experts have evaluated every aspect of the new department, including the location. Um, and it's been deemed both appropriate and feasible by professionals with significant experience uh designing and building public safety facilities. So they've, I mean, over the last two years, I think they've shown that the facility can physically and legally be built with this location. Um, so everybody, you know, up in front of me has been entrusted with, you know, by the public to make decisions on behalf of the community. Um, you know, you guys took years to make an informed and educated decision on this, whether to build a new facility and where it should be located. Um, I urge you guys just to not let a small group of people deter you from a decision that you guys made so carefully. Um, you know, the original decision was the correct one, and tonight's your opportunity to stand by that.
Questions for us before we? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ralph Henderson, McKenzie Civil Engineer. And you think, uh, Antoni Duffin Architects, my colleague Ralph is here. We have two or three of our uh colleagues on the call tonight, just in case there's a question that comes up. We wanted to make sure there's enough representation from the design team from McKenzie to answer any questions should they arise. Will you joining us online is Adrian Linton and Jeff Humphries, uh, department manager and PIC, object principal charge. I am gonna attempt to share my screen here.
So um what I'd like to do is just provide a quick overview. Of the of why we're, what the building is where it is and what things have been. The original goals for the project that were really strong drivers, chief has mentioned, some of them was. Uh a different location to provide more optimal response time to serve the community. Uh having a facility that's front center and visible and welcoming to the community so that people know where they can go if they need help. And something that the city of St. Helens is proud of. And then thirdly, um something that would allow for. Uh future growth and expansion to support the current needs of the department and the future needs of the department over the next hopefully thirty to fifty years. That context helps us understand why the building is placed where it is. On this site, we already talked about why the site was selected, chief offer testimony on why that was selected. Um we're looking zoomed out here just to show context. The shaded zone, the pinkish red color is the building in question. The orange zone is a secondary access road. That has been provided because this is customary to do that for a public safety building. You have a secondary means of egress or ingress for safety reasons for the site. Uh the current location for this uh was coordinated with the fire marshal and the conventions of it were coordinated with the fire marshal. I believe the the code for section five with three point two point one, if that's the correct one. The the width is required is twenty feet. The width is provided is twenty feet, at the exception of where the culvert is existing near the secure parking area for the site. Right here, that's visible for everybody. Um that was coordinated with the fire marshal and was approved by them in the design. So we did this. With input from the people responsible for using this secondary access. The access also serves as a secondary means of egress. Or ingress for police officers. If for some reason the caster access. Was blocked, the gate failed, something that came up, they needed to be able to get out and respond. Um the blue shaded area is um the buffer zone for the wetlands. And so the reason why the building is located where it is. We'll just zoom in. Because we have the FEMA information for floodplain. The building is placed outside of the one hundred year floodplain. Uh you can see the lines moving across the over the ten corner there. We had to live outside of the wetlands. Um we have minimal impact to the wetlands buffer, and that's for the purposes of the secondary access.
What did you say, the elevation of the secondary access would come out to be?
I'd have to look at the, I don't know that off the top of my head. Um that's identified on one of our site plans where there's topography that identifies what it is, but it does connect to. Working street, fifteenth street, so connects to a. If this was a private commercial project, the secondary access wouldn't be, but it's here because. Customary for the nature of this facility.
Curious about the elevation, that's what's in question, right?
Yes.
Will that road be accessible in flood?
Yes, it will, based on the topography and the FEMA maps. And we're going to get into that a little bit with more detail here in a second. So the way the building is posured is close to the future improvement that's anticipated around about. But it's also held back enough that that entrance in the building itself is not within the floodplain. The secure parking for police is between the building and the wetlands buffer. Um that's ideal, and there's the appropriate amount of parking provided facing caster for public use access. I just want to highlight that uh. The facility based on our understanding of all the codes and requirements, it meets everything fully. Setbacks and height limitations are. It 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 complies with all of that. Um it's adequate parking provided based on parking and traffic study and analysis. Understanding the operating needs for police, which they get to define. Um storm drainage usually for city standards of it is designed to meet those. No impacts on the wetlands, minimal impact on wetland protection zone, the buffer. That is allowed to be mitigated with tree planting, and so the mitigation for that is included in the design where new trees will be planted to mitigate the impact. Um and then the floodplain regulations have been satisfied with our interpretation, and we're going to get into that um a little bit more later. Ralph, my colleague here is our civil engineer on the project, and Peter will address. Um but before we do that, I just want to briefly touch on the design of the building. Um it's not part of their contention now, but. Just wanting to reiterate that this facility was designed with input from the community. The intent for the building was to be a welcoming, sophisticated building. The materiality of the project is to tie into this building that we're within right here in the museum. Kind of harkening towards the historical stone uh in the downtown original part of the city. The ideas of this facility responds to that, but also helps bridge the gap between now and future development as St. Helens begins to grow. And um the location that you're looking at here would be what is visible from the corner of Castor and Old Portland Road. That roundabout, making sure that it's clear and discernible where people can go to access this facility as a resident of the community. And I'm going to turn it over to Ralph. Here to um.
Perfect. So punch it down. So at the last meeting, we were asked to provide some cross sections through the site. So. First of all, let me explain this uh uh site plan map. So. The blue dash line is actually through the site and missing the corner of the building by a few feet is the one hundred year floodplain limit. So all of the blue patch uh to the road side of that, to the old Portland road, Castor Road side of that. Is the area that would be under flood within the one hundred year flood event. So once every hundred years, that area would be within flood. So. Uh if you go down the dash line, that is the limits of the flood, which means the flood elevation along that line is zero inches. So everything to the left of that, some flooding, everything to the right of that, there's no flooding in a hundred year flood event. So the first section we're going to look at, well, let's hold on for this, I'm just sorry, so I can explain a little bit. Is section one is this orange line along the bottom, so it's going down the road. If we just showed it by itself, it'd be rather meaningless relative to the site. So we've shown the building in the background. You can see the building is actually about seventy to eighty feet back from that section. So if you go to the section line. So the blue line is the area that would be under flood. So the right hand side of that blue line. The flood elevation is zero. On Old Porton Roads. It's actually considerably more than that, and it's tapers down. Water by definition is going to follow gravity and it's going to go downhill. So uh Milton Creek, if we go back to our previous slide. It is down to the size of Old Castor Road here, so the water is all wanting to head in that direction. The reason it crosses around the birthplace is if Milton Creek floods and doesn't all get under the bridge. Then spills over Old Porton Road, which is what gives this effect. And then spills down, goes over Castor Road, and eventually gets back into Milton Creek again. But along the blue dash line there, it's zero inches of elevation. So everything is essentially, you know, following gravity. Spilling down over Old Porton Road and. Uh the area that's in blue is the area that's within flood. So there's so section one, if we can look at that one more time. So the limits of blue there is the limits that's within the floodplain. So and it would be higher to a portal, but we didn't try and show the exact limits because. It does look a little bit odd in the FEMA map, but we do have to follow the FEMA maps on the right hand side of that line in the FEMA map limits. Though on the roads. It lines up in front of the building, but that's at a point that many feet away from the goal. You go ahead, you go.
It looks like it turned a hundred for your floodplain in your last level.
Uh we have. See on this, the the cross section line here on Castor Road, the floodplain crosses Castor Road in front of the building, but you can see it then that angles back. We were looking at it on the orange line at the bottom. So that's what it looks like in front of the building, which you see the blue line angles back for the building. It's actually further back. So the second one is going to show what is actually at at the middle of the building. So section two there, you can see runs right the way through the building. Section two. You can see here the waters finishes well before the building and. Uh as you can see here. Uh it's actually going to flow into waters on the page, but you know, it's a good, by forty fifty feet away from the building. Actually, if you can go back to the site plan again, sorry, a lot of back and forth here. So for the site plan, you can see in two dimensions, the site is completely out of the blood. The floodplain elevation along that blue line changes for right opposite the corner of the building. It's at elevation sixty one point eight feet. Right at that corner of the building. The building, as you can see, was raised up more than two feet above the hundred year floodplain to elevation sixty four point zero. So you're in two dimensions, you're out of the floodplain, and in three dimensions, you're well above floodplain, you're two point two feet above the hundred year floodplain. So you know, it's well out of the floodplain at that point. The total cross section just along the north side of the site, just to completely cover in sections. Is beyond the end of the building here. And if we can go to, and it's essentially just through the secured parking areas aside. And as you can see here. Uh the floodplain finishes well to the left, then you come across. You come up a slope and then you've got the secure parking, which is all out of the floodplain as well. So essentially. That's why the floodplain, so we have to by code rely on a two thousand and ten FEMA map, because I can refer on FEMA map. And this line here is the hundred year floodplain for that map. Those are sections relative to that. I'm sure, do you have any questions on any of those?
You're building it two feet above the.
Yeah, two point two feet above the hundred year floodplain. Yes. Yes.
What uh extra uh footings and tanks in the ground, hold downs to build?
Well, it's actually out of the floodplain. The building itself is not in the.
So structural fill.
Yes, could be a structural fill. I, yeah, I'm not the structural engineer, I'm the civil engineer, so I design the site. Our structural engineers design all the footing. So we can certainly get that information for you if that's too often.
From the structure, regardless of elevation, both at sea level is not within the floodplain or the FEMA map.
Foundation.
There are, that was considered, is what we made when we.
Yeah, there should.
We'd be designing for the geotechnical soil conditions to. Build on everything.
One of the concerns brought up by staff was that that FEMA map we're referring to is very outdated. You reject that that will be updated and you project those flood zones will change.
Over time flood zones can change, but. By code, we have to design to the current FEMA map, and this is the current FEMA map.
So they're only ten.
Of the twenty ten stats.
Just for reference.
You know, like every twenty to thirty years. Um areas.
I can, so St. Helens. The first one we adopt was was an eighty eight. And then, so that was the first time. We didn't have one prior to that. And then two thousand and ten. That's the second. Time we've had the map.
Thinking about. So and then just to be clear, so the secondary access road is in the back up by the green line, so not enough flood zone. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's outside of the one hundred and five hundred.
Completely out of there. And that would attach to the back of the secure parking.
And it's not necessarily that important, but just as a another layer of understanding. We have. As the city is our client representing their best interest. Working with them, we have also raised the finished floor elevation building above the five hundred year floodline. So which we, based on our understanding and interpretation of the applicable codes and standards, we're not required to do so. But in the event that that could happen, the finished floor elevation is above the elevation shown on the P F floodplain for the five hundred year flood. So the building will sit above that line.
I think that's not within question. What what is in question is, are they going to be able to access the building and getting in and out of the building? Sounds like that intersection in in the event of a flood would not be accessible. So I think making sure there's secondary access is going to be the biggest thing that I'm concerned about. Which it sounds like is covered.
Leave. Ralph, that's it. If if some of them, I think uh I'm going to sit up here and assist if you need it, Peter.
That'd be great if you stay up there. So I um. I think part of the confusion regarding the maps is that there were some efforts made a couple of years ago um to look at mapping. I was a part of that process in SCAPUs, so my knowledge is to SCAPUs on St. Helens. Uh we got some maps that were very different than the prior maps. Um that showed areas of the city that were underwater, that had never been underwater. So we looked um. We asked for the methodology. Originally, we were not provided with methodology, which is. Uh frustrating because it makes it difficult to move versus engineer. But when we were provided with the methodology. Um one assumption had been made that all of the um onto it in the city, so. All of the ways that we we move um. Water in a in a major rain event or flood event would catastrophically fail. So the engineer said, well, none of that will work. Uh which is very, if I understand, I'm not a hydrologist. In order to what we normally CMS practices. So we went to FEMA and FEMA agreed to. Say pause on everything. Um I spoke to a a number of engineers that looked at, she said, that's not an assumption to make. And I spoke to um one of the engineers last week to see what had happened. And my understanding is when they modeled uh the city infrastructure working as it was engineered to work. Then all those areas that have been mapped in were were no longer in. So the built environments of the city. Um and and the maps went back to um. How they kind of looked previously like two thousand and ten. So that's not to say that it the identical thing would happen in St. Helens, but. I think there's a pretty high chance that that's what would happen. Again, um. Uh the floodplain sixty one point eight, the building, when it's finished, will be, you know, sixty four. A couple of feet in a flood event is a significant, I mean. Two, two feet plus doesn't sound like a whole lot until you tell you have water on the ground and then. Over two feet made a huge difference. So this is, this is well uh well outside of of what we expect. The um secondary access road um is out of the floodplain as well. There was at least one member of the community that wanted to see that um. At twenty four feet instead of twenty. Twenty is what the uh fire department needs. For their, that's what they want for their vehicles. Uh there are some issues that I I think it was the mayor, may have been one of the other counselors that mentioned the basalt on the site. There's kind of a basalt shelf. That would likely be pretty expensive in order to remove to get to that twenty four. And if we were to go, if we're to, as I understand it again. Literally, they know everything, but I know I'm not an engineer. If we're to move it the other direction, we'd be moving it towards the um towards wetlands. So it would could. More negatively impact the wetlands. So that's why um. Just a preliminary look, because we got that testimony thing on Friday. Prelimarily, we wouldn't recommend going to twenty four feet from twenty. Just because there's so many, as a condition, because there's so many unknowns about the cost. I will say that if you look at the um. Site and you look at the city's um transportation system plan and trail system plan. There is a trail on the site um away from the buildings, away from the um. Away from kind of the wetlands. So if there is a future uh bike pad access, which is kind of intended, you know, on the twenty foot road. Uh that that's already part of your plan, so so that can happen. If if you want to. If you want to approve uh this. Uh this evening. Um the one thing that that I would ask of you is that. You um define critical facility and and my suggestion would be that you. Say that your definition is consistent with the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, section. One, six, oh, four, four, five, the state's definition, which classifies the police station building. which classifies the police station building, but not the property as the essential facility. So in this case, there is, as you can see, um, and I, I really wish that that map would show more of a topographic, so you can see how high that building is compared to the big red. And then, it, it's a little bit challenging, it looks pretty close to the building, but, but the building's way out. So, it can be kind of a little bit deceiving. There is a public plaza though, that, that, um, is in the, is in the floodplain. That wasn't, uh, terribly a concern to our, um, architects and engineers, because it's, you know, that's.
Its elevation is actually above the floodplain.
Oh, is it? Okay. There's, but there's, it is a small part of the site that, if we're, if we're saying the critical facility is the entire site, there is part of that versus the building, uh, there is part of that site that is in the floodplain. Um, and so that's why I would suggest that you, um, that you clarify the definition for us. Um, and then the, the other, the other piece is, if you're not comfortable with that definition, if you're not comfortable with kind of echoing the state's structural code, the other condition you could, um, you could impose that also would get to yes, would be to take the portion, take any built um, infrastructure, um, take any, anything that's kind of not natural, um, impervious. And say, and you could do the condition that the, that the engineers remove that for kind of the thing. So that, from the overall site, so that wouldn't get built. Uh, I think that you can definitely get there by aligning your definition with the specialty, the Oregon Structural Specialty Code Section. But that would be the, um, that would be the alternative if you don't wanna do it. Um, if you don't want this to be the site for the facility, obviously, there were planning commissions that, that know to it based on the evidence that they had. Again, I, I reviewed the evidence that they had versus the evidence that, as I come to know it and, and work with Mackenzie, they were looking at very different, they were looking at a very different data than, than you're looking at this evening. And that's why when I, um, spoke to bias at the beginning, you know, I mentioned that there would be new data that you would be, um, that all of you would be looking at. That it wasn't there when the site selection happened and wasn't there, um, when the planning commission made their decision. Um, in addition, uh, because there has been some comments on the different criteria that, um, that the, the, the site selection, um, chose and looked at the four sites. Uh, Mackenzie ranked, Mackenzie, um, put equal points on to those different criteria. And then when you got it, when the city got it, um, you did something that was very common, which is because the vision values of every city are different. Different cities prioritize different criteria. And so you added weight to some of those, and you heard the police chief speak to that. You added weight to some of those categories, and you took weight on others. So, every category didn't have the same number of points anymore. The ones who were community priorities had a higher number of points. And the ones that weren't community priorities or were less of a priority have less. And that's how this site ended up being number one. Um, because you, you did what in my opinion is, is what, uh, a council should do, you, you listen to the people that are the first responders. Um, and they're gonna be using the facility, and you said, what's important to you and what's, what's important to the community. And so, that's how we got there on that criteria. Um, and that is, that is what I frankly would hope to see, uh, in that process. Um, because not all categories are the same, and different communities will prioritize what's most important to them. So, uh, and I think Mackenzie knew that when you came up with the criteria, and they expected that would happen as well. They just didn't wanna make the assumption as to what was most important to St. Helens and St. Helens. Um, lastly, just, it's to be to a point that the chief made too, that all those cities that I represent, it's really hard to attract in, in police officers. And to be even more blunt than he was, um, when you have a police station that looks like the current one, it sends an implicit message to folks that are applying to these jobs. And when you have, uh, a, a police station that looks like the one that, that you may have, that's gonna prove, it sends a very explicit message to those first responders about whether the community prioritizes law enforcement or not. And, um, again, all the cities that I regularly represent, we really struggle uh, because of the housing price and all the things that she mentioned. Um, it, they were, the academy was half the occupancy during the pandemic before, and, and they won't put on more. So all of those things are, are reasons that, you know, in, in my mind, and as I reviewed this, uh, about it, that this site and this facility would make good sense for you. Um, there, there are a lot of different criteria that apply, would apply if you made the findings that this critical facility was in the floodplain, you're on all those different kind of, I don't wanna call them rabbit holes, but all those different sections of the code. But if, if this, if you define the critical facility consistent with the state's structural specability code, then you don't have to make those findings about there's no other facility. Uh, again, based on our FEMA data, which is the only data we're legally allowed to use. The two thousand and ten FEMA map is literally, we have to go through what's called a ladder of map provisional, LOMAR, which takes six to nine months with FEMA. You use anything other than our, our current maps. Um, based on that, the police station building envelope is not in the floodplain, so you don't have to make any other findings. And, and I think that, that, that was, I think that the planning commission was, was trying to be really thoughtful, and we're trying to go through those. And, and they just didn't understand that we have an objective test for, um, what's in the floodplain and what isn't in this, this building, isn't. Um, it's part of the site is, uh, and maybe that's how they interpreted it, but, but the building itself is. So that's what I would say, if anyone has any questions, and then I know there'll be, I'm sure there'll be a lot of public testimony, uh, we'll have a chance to revive, um. So.
Do you wanna speak about revised conditions of approval?
Yeah, we reviewed most of the, do you have that slide where we go to them? Um, we, we reviewed the conditions of approval, both of them we thought were prudent. Um, there were a couple of others, um, there were related to the, um, the F T C and the fire hydrant, there was some concern that, um, the fire hydrant would be moved. Um, the fire chief had actually reviewed the both fire hydrants and the F T C and had signed off on those. Um, our one concern with moving the, um, fire hydrant that's on old, uh, Portland Road, is that then you would be fighting, you would be bringing all of this from the same direction versus from one side of the facility and the other. So we were concerned it might be a little bit harder for them to, um, to, to fight the fire from there.
Um. So we have a revised, uh, proposed condition of approval from, you know, because the staff suggested one was, um, uh, shall we move to Castor Road? And so our proposal is that the F T C along Portland, that we moved Castor Road near the new driveway location, which is outside of a floodfront area, and will be accessible via the secondary access in the very off chance that that's required, so that it would put it in even more ideal location. So that is, we have three conditions that we're submitting proposed revisions to those conditions of approval, that's, that's the first one.
And if the risk is sounding low, if there's a major flood event, it seems like the likelihood of a fire is pretty low at that point. It seems like, you know, if there's gonna be a fire on the, probably not gonna be during that major weather flood event.
Uh, the second one had to do with signage on the site, bringing it into conformance. If it hasn't been removed, which I believe it has been, we're proposing that this condition of approval being deleted, being that that signage will be removed, if it happened already, and I believe it's already, well, this isn't even. And then the last suggested condition of approval by staff, question. Not necessarily, uh, so, does planning commission think the secondary access should connect with a pedestrian passageway that connects to Castor Road? What we are proposing is a revised condition of approval is that the proposed project.
Yeah, include a plan for a future pedestrian connection, yeah.
Castor Road or Old Portland Road. And that will be constructed when the funds become available. So right now, there is future improvements being planned, which is why, as Jacob in his presentation showed, that some of those right away improvements have been deferred to further from Castor Road, because why don't you, the city and the residents of St. Helens pay for road improvements twice? When we're trying to work on the future alignment of the roundabout on, on Castor. And there is a future, there have been discussions about trail connections and other things that may happen in the future. This should align with that as that develops. And right now, that funding would take away from the construction, like before the project. That's why we're. To be adopted.
So, if, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to try and take them, and then if not, um, we'll see you after public debate.
Um, so the only question I have was, uh, just that, um, uh, the clarity of the definition of the building itself to not include the patio, is that what I heard?
So if you said it was out, you said it was out, you thought it'd benefit them, but that would, you have to read me my definition, or that. Yeah, so I, I think that, that if you look at, if you look at the entire site, um, if you look at the entire site, the map shows that there's some floodwater there, and, and I had thought that, and maybe I was incorrect. Um, I had thought that the pub, part of the public plaza was, was in that, which didn't give me a lot of concern, because, you know. But, but just to clarify that, if, if you were to define it in that manner, so, everything on the site where we're touching dirt, then that would put us into this kind of, right? If, if you wanna specify that really all we're talking about is the police station building, as that's the essential facility, then we don't have to worry about whether we should remove part of the public plaza or what we do. It's just, um, cause that would be the other way to deal with it, would be you to ask that condition that anything built on the site, we don't build anything in the floodplain, um, but if we just wanna clarify that the, um, it's the police station itself that's the essential facility, it, that solves all.
Peter, if I may, so, u- usually in the floodplain world, we're concerned about building structures. Oh, there's good structures and then tanks and stuff. In this case, we have this definition of facility, and so we're like, God, this is, this is a broader word, so you know, you always fight about words, right? Debate what words mean, and that's kind of what he's getting to. Cause it doesn't say building or police station structure, which would be a very specific definition in the flood code. It's how you interpret, and as the council, you have interpretation, it's, it's your codes, you have that interpretation ability. It's how you define facility, and he's just saying, narrow it to building, which alleviates some of the issues.
Sure, we don't particularly fight over words, but. Because I, I was listening, I didn't wanna interrupt, I just wanted, um, get through this, you know, we've got another public hearing, and then could deliberate all this, so. Um, so pre-dirt, not in floodplain, period.
Yes.
That's what I heard, I just wanna make sure I heard that right.
Yes. One hundred, so one hundred is what matters for the purposes of this facility.
And then, uh, you talked about the original staff report, and I tried to also look at that after public knowledge and read it, and, um, this is very much different than what we would do now. Original staff report.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to.
I think there was a lot of confusion on maps and what maps were legally required to use. And I, I think there was just a lot of speculation and a lot of community concern. Trying to be responsive to that, you know, no disrespect to all the staff or what staff was trying to do. But, you know, once you bring in me and I have to tell you what you legally are required to do, um, then we legally aren't required to speculate, we, we aren't allowed to speculate. It is substantial concern if you go for a LOMAR, that's gonna take six to nine months. Um, but again, with the buildup of the building as it is now, it's just, I mean, I, I feel very comfortable. But yes, what I told you today is very different than what the planning officials.
No, I was just, I just wanted clarification on the whole floodplain thing. Okay, uh, so does it, you have any more, uh, any more people that are coming up? In favor of, so now we will take testimony, and you have to keep your testimony to three minutes or less. And you can, you have to be the speaker of that three minutes.
Check, just so you know, objection to.
This is not an objection, this is, they're, they're meetings run, and, uh, that's the way it is.
Right, how am I supposed to address in three minutes? Two hours.
You have the, you have the chance, like everybody else, for written testimony. Um, just like anybody, free, in any city, it runs. Been, been in the rules for a long time, you know it. The, the rules date three minutes per person on my agendas. Uh, go ahead and state your name for the record, uh, and this is in favor of.
In favor of it. Good morning, Mayor and Council, my name is Doug Tree, I'm currently a graveyard sergeant in St. Helens Police Department. Um, I have to be at work in twenty three minutes, so I will be brief. Um, I am totally in favor of this building and the location, and let me explain to you why. Um, I've been here total of nine years. I was here in, uh, ten years, I was here in nineteen ninety six to two thousand and two, um, in the same building that we currently occupy. I came back after I retired from Lake and Swingle Police as a lieutenant after, uh, twenty six years of service, and I've been here for the last three years. I work with some of the most outstanding police officers in the state here at St. Helens. The officers here can go anywhere in the state and write their own ticket. They are that good, and reputation is that well-known of what we are, uh, St. Helens. Just so you know, it takes of a hundred people who apply, we only hire one percent. When I applied in nineteen ninety six, there were over two hundred people for one job. Our last interview process had thirteen people for three divisions. We cannot afford to lose anybody from St. Helens PD. We need this new building, our current facility is horrible, I get dressed in the parking lot. There's no locker room for me, I'm a supervisor, I let my guys have a locker. And I get dressed in the parking lot, fortunately, it's not raining yet. So when it does, I'll run to the garage and get dressed in the garage. So this new facility, we have to have the location. This location is central to anywhere we need to go, east or west on O P R, north on eighteenth. You put this building someplace else like Pittsburgh and thirty, we're gonna have crashes, because we're gonna have traffic going fifty five miles an hour and forty five, and we're gonna try and come out from zero, the lights and sire and respond, and we're gonna create crashes. That highway speeds are too high, that is not a good location. We looked at Castor and O P R numerous times, we can get anywhere in the city there. They ship, for example, had a call of a man with a gun at the courthouse today. They were able to respond effectively, because they're out on the road. But if they weren't, like a lot of times, we have graveyard shift at twenty hundred. And we have briefing, if we get a call at Walmart, all of a sudden, we have theft in progress, we're driving fast in a residential area. We're bombing down twelfth and fourteenth, we got lights on, but still, we're setting ourselves up for failure. That location at Castor, that O P R is perfect for what we need, and I encourage all of you to approve it. We need the building for the officers, and we need this location for the community. Any questions?
Hello, everybody, uh, I'm Cole Edwards, um, I'm also an officer of the city, I did not wear my uniform today. Uh, this is one of my first days off this whole month, so, uh, I decided to wear my normal clothes today. Uh, there are a lot of smart people in this room, let's go ahead and say that, wow, uh, we're, we're lucky to have those people here, because. Uh, there are a lot of smart people in this room, let's go ahead and say that, wow, uh, we're we're lucky to have those people here because they're very smart, um. I want to talk about the area of the, yeah, as an officer. Uh, what I will say is I probably traveled the old OPR Castor intersection more than any other intersection in the city. Besides the one off, the one off thirteenth. Uh, that's a key, that was a key location in the city. Wherever we're going, whether it's coming from the highway or through the highway. Um, it's easier to travel OPR because, uh, the speed is higher, there's less pedestrian travel. Uh, it's pretty imperative that we have that access to that intersection. Um, I know that there was discussion about the old hospital lot, uh, that's just too far outside the city. Pittsburgh, that's just too far away from from where most people are in the city. Uh, Castor is central, um, we are there all the time, whether it's the bars, whether it's the parks. Uh, the residences, the apartments, we're there all the time and I I can't stress that enough as an officer. Uh, my chief kind of mentioned our current facility, uh, as far as interviews with with victims. I'm going to go a step further and say interview the suspects. Um, I do a lot of, uh, interviews, um, one of the things that I'm good at in our department is doing. Um, kind of longer investigation, working with detectives. Uh, I will say that our our interview areas is is not suitable. Uh, it is very difficult to not only interview suspects. Um, have you ever had talked to a person and they spun freely in a chair in the middle of a room because they're not in a small area, because I have. And it's not easy. Uh, she's exactly right when he says the interview victims, it's embarrassing. In a classroom, uh, we have our gear in there, our locks don't work because it's refurbished, uh, school building. Uh, you know, we we do briefings there, uh, things sometimes get left over and it's just, it's just, it's just not feasible. Uh, and I've mentioned is other other cities' police departments. Uh, I have almost two thousand hours of training in this job, I've only been in this job for seven years. Uh, and I've gone to many different police departments. Um, and it's. It's embarrassing to say that ours is by the way that I've been. Uh, and I've been to May, uh, like I said, I love this city, I grew up here, I love serving this city. Uh, I I don't know about the floodplain and all that, that's that's for you guys to decide, but. This PD needs to happen and these happen soon because we're around now, it's just not to, thanks, guys.
Thanks. Any testimony in favor of?
Well, I'm Adam Hartless, uh, I'm a citizen of St. Helens first and foremost, and I'm also a police officer with St. Helens Police Department. I'm definitely, I'm going to grant that the the police department should be put here at both Portland and Castor. Um, as the other officers have said and as other people have said, uh, location is very key for getting human from pretty much everywhere in the city. Uh, I I think that's been pretty beaten down already and, uh, it's obviously a pretty key point though when it comes to policing, because we need to be able to get some more promptly and successfully. Um, another thing that I'd like to mention, kind of touch on what, uh, Chief and Association President Gassen said. Um, and and what Sir Edward just said as well, our current, uh, police department is very dilapidated. Um, there's wooden walls, there's wires running everywhere. You know, I I would say that there's more likeliness of that building just falling in on itself by it on its own than whatever happened here. Um, Castor and Old Portland Road. Um, and as as we've heard already, um, just from me being here, um, it appears that the, uh. That I would say that. The new building is not going to be in a flood zone, at least from what I'm seeing. Uh, testimony today, um, so I would highly encourage, you know, highly. Um, reflect on the fact that whatever all the experts are saying, it's going to be a very, uh, beneficial place to put the police department. Um, we kind of touched on what Sergeant Tree said, um, right now I'm a bigger guy, I don't know if you guys noticed that. Uh, we have, I I wouldn't even call them half walkers. Uh, my vest itself does not fit in one of the walkers, so I I have to change at my house, um, and potentially have people see me in uniform, which. I generally wear stuff over my uniforms, so people can't see that, but still, um, that that doesn't just put me in danger. Um, I hope everybody else has to think about this kind of thing, but, um. I don't want people knowing where I live as a cop, thanks to me that not only me, but my, obviously you guys, but my son and 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 my wife, so. Um, as far as retention, um, our building is not beneficial for officer retention. Or officers, uh, wanting to come to this department. Uh, this last summer, I got a chance to work with the Washington County Sheriff's Department. Um, they didn't even want to go inside of our building. Because they're like, no, we'll 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 put out some lawn chairs out in the yard. I'm not making this up, this was, this really happened. I mean, because of how updated our building is. Um. So again, I'm definitely for, uh, the building on Castor OPR, I I had a part in that decision. Um, it's the only logical place in my mind. Um, but it it seems like it's a very logical place according to the the very smart people and engineers. So I'd like, uh, you guys to really consider this as as a very valuable piece of the response, thank you.
Hey, who else in favor of?
Yes, sir. Um, Jennifer Masti, St. Helens, um, hopefully I'll make this pretty quick. A lot of time for this, whether or not, um, so greeting councilmen, um, I encourage the council to look at the entire holistic picture. Uh, the current and future ramifications of the of not building a proposed police station. I encourage the city to look into the nomenclature from the planning commission presentation of both. And ensure that only substantiated facts and evidence by qualified individuals are considered. So in other words, not personal opinions, um. It seems like there's a lot of personal opinions that, uh, rendered we should just stick with the facts and evidence for the read license. Engineers are professionals. Uh, furthermore, maybe all the procedures were not called and they should have been when it came to this police, uh, department. But that ship is sailed, we've already had the loan paid on the loan and we have the plans. I feel like it would be financially prudent to move forward rather than wasting approximately one million taxpayer dollars. It appears that the verbiage critical facility is a concern for a few, um, and the basis for public disagreement. Um, as we heard tonight, the facility and what I understood from the planning commission, uh, meeting was it was not in a floodplain. So that's why we've been speaking out against that, that was obviously, uh, true. The interesting part is that, uh. I mean, obviously that if there's something that happened and there was a flood, our officers are not going to be chilling in the police department, having brats and beers, right? They're going to be out in the community, they ha- they're they're fluid, they could create a command post wherever they need to go, they're not going to be there. Um, and I'm also not going to pick apart the plans today because that is left to the professionals and the attorneys. Rather than I'm going to opine that the planning commission as well as comments that are adamantly against the building. Uh, building the police department should be discredited as it appears that there have been plans considered to develop this area. With structures from circa two thousand twelve. For the waterfront development, um, and that's with residential individuals that are not trained like law enforcement officers. And in two thousand and three, it appears that there's an agreement, uh, by the planning commission or in support of as well as individuals. To put a homeless camp in the area adjacent to what we're speaking to that isn't a floodplain. So we have train officers that would get out, but we're going to put homeless people in an area. I mean, are you absolutely kidding me? There's been kids in that rec center and we we're going to put a homeless shelter there. And by the way, shelter, which is also part of the critical facility, can be classified as tents. That includes shelters and that's also tents. Uh, so I just am at a loss for words, I don't really think I need to say anything more other than that. Homeless people obviously don't count and I think that it's just, uh, just, excuse me, disgusting that we would put people there, but we're considering a police department, it's crazy.
Alright.
Adam St. Pierre, St. Helens, um, I have a different perspective on this, I have new service electrical work. I've been in a dozen to two dozen police stations in the local county area. I do service work, contract work for all these stations. Those pictures I've seen, I have not been in our station, look like nothing I've seen anywhere else. That's kind of deplorable, um, we have an officer. Think that might be some of it, we've lost a couple more officers at neighboring agencies. I'm just putting one on one together, I'm not a genius, I don't know this stuff, I just use common sense and what I've seen in my life. And there are definitely the need for a new police station, I think any. Delay is uncalled for, we need to get it happening, we need to happen now, we've already spent the money. You know, to have a design, why reinvent the wheel? Thank you.
Who else? We have, oh.
Uh, I've weighed in on this police station before, uh, I went to the original planning committee meetings on it. And it's really good to see the information's come out since and and. Some of the other clarifications that they've been able to make with regards to secondary access to the structure itself never being five hundred. Uh, your blood plane even. Um, if you guys remember, I think it was the fourth slide we watched from this presentation started on behalf of the the city planners, you noticed that. The five hundred year floodplain is that it went up Old Portland Road towards Gable, there's another law enforcement facility located. Actually still within the five hundred year floodplain and that was able to be. You know, plans are, I'm a I'm a planner, I'm a project planner, before I decided to dip my toe into the dirty pool of politics, I liked building things for a living and. Uh, this variance in the site improvements that have been made and planned thus far are entirely consistent between the capital improvement projects that I've done. All up and down this river and almost every project I've done, because I'm in the commercial wiring and burning of the structure is in floodplain. I think that the contractors who have been brought into. Research on the site study and to establish the new building have done an excellent job. Showing that they've planned around any potential impacts that they've had. Even better than what was put in place for the Columbia County Sheriff's Bill. Um. I'm. And was very moved by a lot of testimony by the chief and some of the other officers talking about how awesome this facility would be from a. Um, you know, putting officers into circulation standpoint. If you're designing a, uh, a system like in the human body, you don't put the heart in the hand. Or the foot, you put it in the center of the area where it's going to be able to push stuff out. Throughout this whole process, I I've become ever increasingly positive that just from a a standpoint of public safety. Officer retention, that there are. Two with all pros, no cons to building a new police station.
Okay, we'll go with neutral.
Well, is anybody online?
Oh, yeah, I apologize, is there anybody online in favor of? See any? Okay, let's go with, uh, neutral.
Hello, my name is Shauna Strout, Harrison, and I, uh, live in St. Helens. Uh, I continue to be threatened by the lack of foresight when it comes to working within the limitations of land and topography in this community. Um. Uh, the floodplain here has existed for a very long time. I continually come to meetings for wetlands and floodplains are glazed over. When prequel arrived at the site, anyone here who have been a lifetime resident are aware of how many areas in that vicinity that have flooded. It's renowned here, many areas are built with expensive foundation, isn't that an option here? I hear it's going to have feet, but perhaps parking on the main level would be more feasible. Places that flood do make accommodations that work, God forbid a catastrophic event happen. It would be in the occupants of the building's best interest to be self preserving. Many people don't keep valuables in basements due to their propensity to flood. So though this site has never been my favorite. Um, being this is this far into the process seems negligent to not have prepared for accommodating flood zones on all fronts from the beginning. In downtown Portland, the Willamette Crescent in nineteen sixty four, building around Front Street after that started utilizing on the ground parking. Um. Honestly, I just assumed that when I saw the prequel going in there, it was likely that's all that was going to be done here. Based on the information that many people in this town and this building and people sitting up here that have been lifelong residents. Knew when it came down to trying to traverse Castor Road, got to avoid the cafe during nineteen ninety six. I toured the current police facility, no one has to convince me we need a new facility. Uh, the growth continues to linger in the mental health at the helm that is absolutely haphazard and flat out dangerous. To continue to run a skeleton crew for law enforcement as tourism continues to be. At the forefront, it's completely unsustainable and unrealistic to expect to keep on expanding our exposure and tourism growth without increasing our safety protocols or resources. As you continue tonight, think about making more accommodations for vulnerable people needing mental health help. I'm hopeful you take into consideration this important topic at hand and how the lack of having a proper law enforcement presence in the facility. Is high risk for the safety and livability of people in this community. It's not lost on me or many locals that live in town that are burdened with the continual growth of criminals committing crimes. At a alarming increasing rate in our town.
Any online? I think now we'll go ahead and opposed.
Can you start with Robin online, Mayor? I'm just going to read something online. Uh, she's online.
I am, Robyn Toski.
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to say. I'm I'm not speaking against the police or the new police station or the need of it at all, it seems. Completely relevant and, um, of the utmost importance. So I'm just going to speak to the legal analysis of the law that is currently in place, so. Uh, the engineer or the guy who spoke for McKenzie said something like, change the law and then we'll be okay, but the law that is in place. Seventeen dash four six dash oh four oh says that the construction of critical facilities. Shall be to the extent possible located outside the special flood zone and that's where this is, so. Um, the SFHA shall have the lowest flood elevated at least three feet above the base. Flood elevation to the height of the five hundred year flood zone. Um, also that measure should be taken to ensure toxic substance will not be displaced or released into the floodwaters. So the question is, can the city get around the requirements of seventeen point four six point oh five oh? Because the building is located outside the flood zone and the answer is. No, that's how seventeen point four six point oh five oh is written and that's why the planning commission, um, vetoed it now. Uh, and it's it's in the. In the interest of public safety, um. And it specifically says improvements, parking lots, green space, sidewalks. And all of that is in the drawings that they presented tonight. Question two, do other sites exist within St. Helens where the critical facility can be located? That was the other option to, to the exception to the law that is on the book seventeen point four six point oh four and oh, oh four oh, excuse me. Um, and there were other sites and. You know, we're all not, we aren't, weren't privy to the process of choosing this one, um. And so the city now has the burden to prove that there's no other alternative sites. And there is, so is this the right decision to deny the conditional use permit? I mean, I'm saying, yes, yes, it is. Um, the seventeen point four six point oh four oh one oh. Is to protect human life and health, to minimize expenditure of public money and costly flood control projects. To minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts and to minimize damage to public facilities. Um. That's all, and and I absolutely pro police and I'm so happy to hear all the good reports from them, but. Just the laws on the books now are what you guys have to consider. And if I feel, if if there's a change of law, that's a whole different, that isn't what we have. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, you go here.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Scholl, um, I want to add some things, uh, in my very brief time here. Um, the page that, uh, can I, can I wait?
I'll be listening.
Okay, well. Uh, can I, we just, okay, so anyway, the 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 page that Jacob skipped over at the beginning was something that was, that's in the record. And what he said, what what the law says, that if there's any other facility, it should be chosen, this is a critical facility. It, we're talking about human life here and I'm not here talking about. Uh, the police who are here or anybody in this room, I'm talking about the people who may be dying in a flood and need help from.
the people who may be dying in a flood and need help from our police, but they cannot get do what they need to do because their base is cut off by a five-foot wall moat. Jacob testified, and I wanna bring this forward in the original planning commission um hearing that there's a five-foot torrent of water that's going to be going across Old Portland Road. If there was a hundred-year flood right now on our site, our site, our our the police would be it would be completely inaccessible, it'd be underwater. I drove down Milton, I crossed Milton Creek that when Milton Creek overflows, it just flood, there's a big steep hill that heads down toward this site, now I think could you put the slides up, please?
Um you gave me a bunch, so which one?
Uh sample, sample, um sample. I said sample slides.
Again, this wasn't, this was something that popped on my city report right last minute, this could be, this could be
No, 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 this isn't, this isn't.
This can go public.
Okay, here you go, so seventeen dot four six. This is the law, this is the criteria, the announced criteria for this body today. It is, this is something you must make a finding of, and the city has the burden of proof on. And it says a critical facility, there's no question this is a critical facility. Construction of new critical facilities shall be to the extent possible located outside the limits of special flood hazard area. Next slide, please. To the extent possible, next slide, please. So how do we define public safety facility? Now, this is the law we enacted to pay for it. This is on our books, it means the site, the improvements, the parking lots, the green space, the sidewalks, the buildings associated. That's why this lawyer from McKenzie, who's billed us like two million dollars plus to get us to this point, and Russ, they've known about it since twenty twenty about this problem. They were discussing it in emails, and I have a whole list of emails back and forth. And Mayor, you were not included in this, and neither were any of the council. Uh and that since twenty twenty, they were discussing, Jacob was warning them, this process is coming. You must be be considering these other sites. McKenzie, Matt Brown said go full steam ahead in twenty twenty to McKenzie, and they went full steam ahead on this knowing full well that this was gonna come down today at some point. And uh so I just, can I finish my presentation? I'm happy to answer questions, Mayor.
You got, I'll give you a hundred more seconds.
Okay, okay, so that's our law, and we shouldn't be ignoring it, and the lawyer for McKenzie's trying to cover for them, trying to say we should ignore it, next slide. Uh the site is in the flood zone, there's five feet of water there, next site. Next slide, this is the site in our own documents, it's in the flood zone. How are you gonna win an appeal to Luba if the site is in the flood zone itself? Next slide, please. There are tons of other areas in the city, uh next slide, please. The the hundred-year flood zone, the the maps here show the site is in the hundred-year flood zone, it doesn't make the legal requirement, next slide, please. The Pootin' the Largo property is available, there's another site available, the city cannot make it burn to proof, next slide, please. The current police site, which I guess is a wreck, we could tear it down.
We're we're done, I mean, this is not, this is, this is above and beyond what no, no more, next slide, Kathy, we're done.
Okay, just promote the health and welfare.
If you have one critical, one last comment, and that's it, not even five, ten seconds, what is it?
You you should uphold the planning commission meeting and and deny the application because it's against the law, and if this gets appealed to Luba, you will lose.
Okay, and you continue to break rules here in every meeting, just about every meeting I've had.
And and then counselor children, you can't build an access road, it doesn't solve the problem.
Let you know that
Doesn't solve the problem. Full access road, but right now, that access road is a squirrel trail, and you can't get to it. Talking about life and death.
At this point in time, I'm gonna ask you to reply yes, or I'm gonna have you trespass. That is my right, I want you to believe me, I'd like a little more respect from you as a council representing the city and you being an attorney especially. Especially as an attorney.
Counselors walk down on my
You should, you would never do this in the courtroom, alright, we're done.
I might, actually. I wanna make sure I object to all of the, anything you've heard is irrelevant.
And I will trespass you, and you will not be allowed to come here. And then you can file lawsuits like you do.
But not necessary, Mayor.
That's what you always threaten.
I might have sung out that two of the ad hoc committees um for this original selection process were on the planning commission and stated that they were removed from the selection process when they objected to this application. So I don't know that anybody bought that up, and I believe you were one of the two people that said that they were Carlson was the other one, and there might have been a third one. Um you also might want to get with your attorney to tell him about your corruption of selecting the dirt that you claimed was not for the building, he said seventy thirty-six, he just stated that, oh, after the buildup of dirt for the building um it's way above flood plain, he just said seven thirty-six, he might have informed him that that you were gonna be corrupt and and do the full process. This is not about whether this is a good site and needs a police station, it's about the process. And there was clearly corruption, you don't have a public hearing for dirt. And now this public hearing is the same thing, you did both scans, you've already made your decision. I, we all know it, we all know what the decision is gonna be, you're gonna approve the dirt when you deliberate, you're gonna do that land sale. You're gonna approve the patient, and you're gonna just move right on like nothing happened. And I find that, I find that really corrupt. That is, that's simple, it's that corrupt. I often take some exception with some of the things that she said about twenty-three employees in the police station. You don't ever have twenty-three employees there, maybe you might have a meeting occasionally on a regular basis, there are not twenty-three, there are on a daily basis. Uh the police station is closed to the public, no one can get to it. So you're gonna build this building, and who's gonna be there? We don't have staffing. We need staffing, that's our priority. You can't go to the police station now and get into it, and that's not really a criticism, frankly. I'm glad that the police are out on the road working, but why are we building a building to have it not staff? And by their contract, if we build this building and it is staff, we now double the number of police officers we need on duty at a time. Cause you're gonna have to have two there and two in the patrol, how are we gonna pay for it? We can't. So rather than building a building which the police chief himself said is a trophy building, that we want to come into town and it looks nice, rather than build a trophy, we need police, that's what we need to concentrate on, more police, less buildings.
Now it's time to speak. Everybody on Zoom?
Is it too late to add to the pro, I was a missed opportunity to talk about pro, I was taking care of a baby.
Um unfortunately, it is, and I apologize.
It's public, we're still public testimony, I don't think it would be.
Okay, well, go ahead and uh my, again, um I run this meeting, but um
Yeah, sorry.
And so It has sailed, so I think I'm gonna say, uh I'm sorry, we're past that point.
That's okay, I can respect that.
Okay. I apologize for inappropriate behavior.
So I'll try and get back to So under your code, which is seventeen point four six point oh two oh eight, critical facility means a facility for which even a slight chance of flooding might be too great, critical facilities include but are not limited to schools, everything homes, hospitals, police, fire, and emergency response installations. And the collections which produce used or hazardous materials or or hazardous waste. So uh that's the, that's the definition for it, it it doesn't get into what portion of the site would be um considered the critical facility, which is why I asked. That and and you are entitled to vast uh discretion in your interpretation of your code. Um so but i- in this case, that's why I asked that that you clarify that um that definition is consistent with um Oregon Structural Specialty Code Section one six oh four point five uh which classifies police station buildings but not property as risk category four essential facilities. Um as far as um your code thirteen uh point thirty point oh three oh, which is the funding mechanism for a facility. Uh there are a lot of reasons, that's not a land use code, title thirteen's not a land use code as a funding, there are a lot of reasons um why the the funding would be different than land use. And the main reason is lawyers, so um it's that it I once had, I represented a city where another attorney had had an urban renewal area, and it it listed some specific uses. And it didn't say including, it just lifted the uses. And then when it, when the increment came in, it was time to spend.
Is there some kind of time limit on rebuttal?
Excuse me, this is the applicant, which is the city, do you not understand the process?
I'm insane, and it's no different than I can often talk about people living and dying, and I get three minutes and and
People are not, you're not, you
And then the applicant gets
You're trespassed. Sorry about that, the advocate is
It's the most excitement I've had in a very long time for today here in St. Helens, um. So so in that case, we have to go out and get clarification on our urban renewal from the voters. Um so when it comes to spending fees, um generally, it's site-wide. So that we don't have to figure out whether the picnic table is included in what could be funding, what could be funding includes landscaping, it would include street string remediation, it would include anything that's site-specific. So uh your city administrator doesn't have to call up Mr. Monahan and say it's authorized. Whereas this is a critical facility, this is an essential facility, what's included in that.
I think I see what's going on here, I think there's a bit of a disruption here, because clearly what you just stated was very vital for not just us to hear, but I think everybody here. And there was like an abduction that came
Right.
Right at that critical moment to distract people.
Right, I'm not
And so I would love for you to repeat that, because that's what I heard there, and I heard a distractor back there um that knows the court and how to distract and make somebody who's been litigating a long time, and we are not. And and using that for his own good.
So title thirteen is not a land use title. It it's, it's not the definitions in title thirteen, which is a judiciary funding. It'd be different than a land use title because the objectives of those two titles in your code. Title seventeen for land use, title thirteen funding, the purposes are different. If you're looking at funding and what you can and can't do, what I would say if I were writing your code um which I did for your sewer, that was my last St. Helens project, was is that you want you want clear and objective standards, and you want simplicity. And so we're talking about how can funds have been collected for a specific use to be used on a site. If it's on that site, whether it's building a building, whether it's building a parking lot, whether it's a picnic table on the grass, whether it's the grass itself, whether it's mitigation to help prevent flood, whatever the use for that site is title thirteen is specifying that you can use it. So that your city administrator is not having to call Mr. Monahan and say, hey, it said building, but it didn't say picnic table. It says landscaping, I mean, it really, title thirteen thirty point oh three oh sub three which is what I looked at, says basically any improvement on the site, you can use the funds that are collected for that. That's very different than the land use purpose, which to the person who keeps interrupting me, yes, public safety. So what's the most important part of keeping people safe? In my opinion, it's the building itself. If there's a grass or landscaped area that's underwater that's at a lower elevation than the building, is that going to be critically important to the health and safety of people? Or less so? The question is going to be the building, is it going to be dry? We have every reason to believe that it will, it's a couple feet above the flood plain. And then the ingress egress, again, I'm not an engineer, but the engineers at McKenzie looked at this, and what they said was, yes. That secondary ingress egress is out of the flood plain, and I wanna clarify something else. I don't represent McKenzie, I have never represented McKenzie, I was not involved in this process, I was called three weeks ago about three weeks ago by your city administrator who occasionally calls me for projects. And I almost always say, no, I don't have capacity, John, and this time when he told me what it was, I said, yes, I'm gonna spend the time. Uh because I consider this to be a critical facility for this city. So the answer was yes, I only represent the city, I am only representing you as the as the representative for the applicant, which is the city. Um McKenzie is the team that was on this when I showed up. So yes, I'm calling them, I'm getting all the information, I'm relying on their expertise. I mean, you're doing everything the city's done, I'm looking at few amounts, I'm doing all the due diligence that I would do for this project. So that I can offer you my legal opinion on risks associated with taking different steps, and how you can get to whatever outcome you as a city want to get to, because it's your vision and values that matter, not mine, and that's what I have attempted to do tonight. So no, I don't um represent McKenzie.
Alright, uh I think that would wrap up the public hearing, uh so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. And we're gonna take a five-minute break, so